Start our meeting, and thank you, everybody, for showing up. Before we get started, though, I need to ask our city attorney to please report out on a closed session meeting that we had before this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council previous --
(noise)
The city council previously met in closed session regarding existing litigation, hacienda realty and Russell Stanley versus the city of Montessorino, and we have nothing to report.
Thank you very much. With that, I would like to have everybody please stand for our Fledge of Allegiance.
Our Fledge of Allegiance is to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call? Please.
Councilmember Ann Standig?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Willsheimer?
Here.
And Mayor Craig?
Here. Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the orders of the day?
There are no changes.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to ask anybody who would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda can please come forward. Seeing none, I will move on to written communications. Do we have any written communications? No written communications. This brings us to the consent calendar, which will be items one through four. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, please? So moved. Okay.
We have different motions, okay?
So we're gonna...
Okay.
Vote?
Can you vote?
No voting button yet.
Do they have a motion?
All right.
Okay, I have all votes in.
Please record the vote.
Okay.
Looking at the screen. All right, thank you. So that brings us to item number five, the Montalvo Oaks hacienda development, and we're going to have a staff report first, followed by a presentation. There will be some questions between the council and the staff, and then we will move to public testimony. The public testimony will start at three minutes. Please be very respectful of times. I have a lot of cards here tonight and a lot of people that are going to be speaking. I know this is a very, a very important issue for a lot of people, so I would like to please stress that we would, we want to exercise civility, no clapping, no booing, no cat calls. Let's just be respectful. Everybody's got an opinion. Everybody's opinion is valid here, and the council will really appreciate it, and so are your fellow attendees tonight. So with that, I will say, I think we're gonna start with Jeannie and the staff report.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oh, oh.
One last item, we've got to finish with the upgrades.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. It's my pleasure to be in front of you this evening to present the Montalvo Oaks housing development. What I'm gonna present is really a brief overview of the project as has been presented in your staff report. We also have our environmental consultant, who prepared the mitigated negative declaration, and she'll be able to speak to that process and the outcome of it. What's before you this evening is a number of applications. Those applications being a general plan amendment that would modify the city's multifamily residential land use designation to allow up to nine dwelling units per acre, but in that instance, only through a planned development zoning. The next application that's before you is a planned development zoning, which would prezone the property to allow up to 36 dwelling units, including 21 single-family detached and 15 multifamily dwellings. The next item, application before you, is a request to annex the subject property to the city of Montessorino. In order to do this type of development, it would need to come into the city's jurisdiction. It's not something that the county would entertain, and they want to see this level of development happen within incorporated boundaries. The next applications in front of you are a planned development permit, a grading use permit, and tree removal permit, which are, tend to be referred to as the development entitlement permits. We've put those all in kind of one permit because they're interrelated and they're, they're all kind of a unified, we use the unified approach. Also before you is a vesting tentative subdivision map, which again would be the tentative map to put forth the proposed subdivision, the different lots, the private streets and the private infrastructure. What would need to follow after that at a different, within a different timeframe is the actual final map, which would put that subdivision into place. And as part of all of these, an environmental review process took place, and we would need you to consider the mitigated negative declaration, which covers all of those above applications that I just discussed, as well as an associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program. With us today is, how do you pronounce your last name?
Terry Whistler Adams.
Terry Whistler Adams, from EMC Environmental Group, who prepared the initial study, and she's here to speak on that process and the comments we received and the outcome of that.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Mayor Craig and members of the council, again, my name is Terry Whistler Adams. I'm with EMC Planning Group. The city hired us to prepare an initial study to evaluate the environmental impacts of the project before you this evening. I'm gonna briefly go over the impacts that we identified that were significant, that required some type of mitigation measure, keeping in mind that there were impacts beyond these that were also adverse, but didn't rise to the level of significance. So the first one was associated with air quality. We looked at consistency of the project with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District's Clean Air Plan, and determined that there needed to be just a little bit of mitigation and tweaking of the project designed to ensure its consistency. There are construction emissions that needed to be mitigated. The project also includes removing 66 trees, and of course, that requires mitigation. There is a small mixed oak woodland habitat in the southern portion of the site, and a small portion of that would be coming out with implementation of the project. There are also mitigation measures in case there are any nesting birds or roosting special status bats on the site during construction, so that requires preconstruction survey. There's an onsite drainage feature that needs to be evaluated to determine whether it's considered a wetland or not. There are some mitigation measures that are standard for archaeological resources, mitigation measures for ground shaking, which is pretty common throughout all of California. Erosion is, would be an issue based on the amount of dirt that would be moved, so that requires some mitigation. And then there's construction-related noise that's also mitigated. So when, once we finished with the initial study, we prepared mitigated negative declaration, which basically concludes that with implementation of mitigation measures, there's no significant environmental impact associated with the project. The documents went out for public review from May 6th to June 4th, required 30-day public review period, and we received comments from 12 public agencies and individuals. Those comments received, resulted in some modifications to the mitigated negative declaration, which is in your packet tonight. The revised mitigated negative declaration shows the changes in strike-through and underline resulting from comments on, during the public review period. The majority of them were associated with the mitigation measures for biological resources, nesting birds and roosting bats. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife just had some recommendations for modifications to the existing mitigation measures, so we incorporated those. And then prepared a mitigation monitoring and reporting program to ensure that the mitigation measures are implemented before and during construction, and that's also before you tonight to adopt.
So, I'm gonna run through some of the project specifics, and then, you know, once I get through all of this, we'll hand it over to the applicant to get into a little more detail about their project. But as many of you know, this site, the existing Jack Rose, Bramble Beer hacienda site is about 4.45 acres in size. Its current use includes a 20-room, single-room occupancy residential facility, the old hotel or inn, a realty office, and the two commercial buildings that house the Jack Rose, Libation House, and Bramble and Beer establishments. Again, as I mentioned earlier, they propose 21 single-family detached dwellings and 15 multifamily dwelling units. This over the site is at a density of 8.08 dwelling units per acre. The multifamily dwelling units include seven units in attached townhomes and then eight units in duplexes or duets. Also, within the project is the preservation of the mixed oak woodland at the south of the site, which is approximately 0.72 acres. Generally, the project design, the site includes a single loop road that comes off of Highway 9. There is an emergency vehicle access in there required by the county fire department. There's extensive landscape throughout the project, and more specifically, heavily landscaped frontage along Highway 9 to enhance the scenic value of the site as it currently is, or is not. Additionally, there are 20 on-street parking spaces for guests. As some have asked, all of the roads and utilities on the site will be private, and they will be maintained by a homeowners association. The way the site is laid out, you have the single-family detached dwellings on the east and the west sides of the subject property. Townhomes are at the southern edge, up against the toe of the hill. And then you have some small lot, single-family detached, and some duets within the central, what's referred to as the court home, portion of the property, and those garages are entered off of driveways, which is what you might see in a court home-type setup. There's also two duplexes or duets along Highway 9 that the garage entrance is interior to the site, so the frontage, they also front out onto Highway 9. And again, the hillside property of the mixed oak woodland is preserved in open space in perpetuity as part of this project. So the project architecture, generally speaking, the single-family detached homes, they vary in architectural design, and they all have two-car garages. Some have a two-car driveway apron, so in addition to the enclosed two-car spaces, there's the ability to park two cars on the driveway apron. There are some others that have the two cars, but they're offset so that there's one driveway apron to park an additional car. The designs vary in roof design, the use and mix of materials and color, as well as some architectural details, and all of this is very consistent with the city's adopted residential or design guidelines. Many of the homes also include a front porch to create an active streetscape for more of the resulting neighborhood. The multifamily units, the ones that are at the southern area of the site against the hillside, similar to the single-family, the architectural design is varied. They use some different details and roof designs, again, consistent with the city's design guidelines, and each of those units have a two-car garage at the lower level with the two levels of living above. Several of the units have a porch either at the front or the rear of the unit. There's also some duplexes or duets that are proposed along Highway 9 and in the central court home portion. Each of these duets, again, have a two-car garage, and as part of, which is typical of a private development, they'll, in the CCNRs, there'll be a requirement that those garages be used for the parking of vehicles and no other purpose, so that residents don't take up the guest parking. These, these buildings had a unique presence on Highway 9, so we really did push that there was some interest in the design that fronted out onto Highway 9, as well as wrapping that architectural design around the sides of the structures. So, having said all of that, some of the project highlights and project attributes would be that the project with its 21 single-family detached and 15 multifamily dwelling units, this project at the density of 8.08 does support the city's conformance with its adopted housing element. The mix of units creates a range of ownership opportunities within the city of Montessorino. The proposed site plan, as I mentioned, is designed around a loop road, again, creating a unique opportunity for a neighborhood on the site. The development also preserves oak woodland as an open space and requires the protection and even the enhancement of it. Up to this point, it hasn't really been invested in as far as planting of additional trees, and some non-native species have invaded, so some of the mitigation in this project would be to clear out some of those and plant native species within there. The proposed home designs include a variety of styles and finishes that provide for a neighborhood of interest and detail. And then the height of the structures has been kept down to provide for a continual view of the ridge to the south. And with the incorporation of mitigation measures, that support the project, the incorporation of these mitigation measures support a project with a less and significant environmental So, you know, asking what, what are the required actions by the city council tonight? Basically, what you would be doing would be to consider the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigated, mitigation monitoring, thank you, and reporting program, and adopt a resolution finding that both are in compliance with CEQA and their implementing guidelines. Next in the sequence would be to consider the general, the proposed general plan amendment and adopt a resolution containing the proposed language, increasing the allowed density within the multifamily residential land use designation. Next in the sequence would be to consider the proposed planned development zoning and adopt a resolution prezoning the subject property to multifamily planned development, which be, would be an RMPD designation. Next in the sequence would be to consider the annexation and adopt a resolution initiating the annexation, annexation of the subject property and forwarding your action to, onto The next action you would need to take would be to consider the proposed development permit and adopt the resolution approving as-conditioned the planned development permit, grading use permit, and tree removal permit. And then also, finally, consider the proposed subdivision and adopt the resolution approving the vesting tentative map. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff? I'll start on my right. Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I do have a question, and that has to do with the effect on the schools once we build this property.
Want to answer that? Okay, I can. So the state has basically left that up to the school districts, so the school districts have the ability to impose an impact fee to cover any of the needs that they may have, and it's in the hands of each of the school districts to establish what fee they feel is appropriate. So, once they get to a building permit stage, that's when any impact fees will be assessed, and they'll pay those directly to the school district before, and the city can issue any building permits.
Thank you.
Were you asking which school district, though, or?
Yes, also which school district.
Which?
Would that be Saratoga, right?
It would be the Saratoga Elementary School District and the Saratoga-Los Gattis Union High School District.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Willsheimer?
I have a question about a detail, the EVA. How does that work? Is it gated? Can anybody just drive out, out of that, or?
No, that, usually, the, the fire prevention or the fire district has their standards. A lot of times, they'll be bollards, that they'll then have the ability to unlock and release. The finished treatment applicant will coordinate with them what is appropriate. It, it won't just be a solid paved, you know, sometimes there can be differing treatments that are acceptable, and it'll have to be able to, again, it's really intended in emergency. It's not a daily access at all, and only available for emergency vehicles.
Thank you.
And? Okay. Councilmember Ann Standig?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Turn it on. Lean in a little bit more for you. In the report that was issued, I think you were saying that it's compliant with, that the plan as it's proposed is compliant with our current housing element. Is that because of the fact that there are 15 multifamily units that are included in this project of 29?
I think there are a couple things it does provide for that multifamily zoning, the ability to provide multifamily units, it's a zoning that provides for that, as well as a range, a range of housing opportunities for residents in the city.
But without the range, if, if it was simply a development of 15 multifamily units, would that be in conformity with our housing element?
Yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rogers?
I have no questions at this time.
All right, thank you. So, at this time, I think we're going to hear from the applicant or his team.
Is it just one of you?
It'll be multiple.
Okay.
Stand up at one of the time, or?
You'll go first, Reece.
I'm just gonna do my presentation.
We're anticipating the presentation to take anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes.
Hi, my name is Reece Stanley. Should I be speaking into a microphone? My apologies. So, hi, my name is Reece Stanley. I've been a resident of Montessorino my entire life. I was born and raised here, and I'm speaking on behalf of Montalvo Oaks. I have a unique perspective on the project because I've, you know, both been a resident and I've seen the development side for, you know, most of my life, so I have an interesting viewpoint, as I have a vested interest in the city as well as the development.
Can you speak into the microphone a little bit?
Yeah, my apologies. Sorry, it's kind of far. So, okay, thank you. So, the message I'm trying to get across with this presentation today is that we're working towards a solution with the city. We've been in contact with the city since last October, and since then, we have signed and submitted a project application for 36 units as of February, and we've been working with city staff in order to accommodate the city as a whole and provide a project which we think you will be satisfied with, as it is in character with Montessorino, fits the needs of the city and the state, as they require multifamily housing, and, you know, just bring something new to the city, which we think you'll be proud of. As a result of these design changes, we have made changes to the architecture, as previously mentioned. We've included emergency vehicle access, provided extensive street parking, planted over 100 trees, and we're committed to restore the oak woodland at the back of the property. And we've designed the project to make sure that when you drive down Highway 9, you're proud of what you see. And the real message of this presentation is that we're trying to transform our city together, and we think that Montalvo Oaks is the perfect way to do so. La hacienda is currently the only property which is both willing and able to accommodate multifamily housing in Montessorino, and we think it would be a great idea to move forward with development. And as time is of the essence, as you know, the state requires that the city have multifamily housing, and this development would ensure that the city does meet state requirements. Not only that, but it would help meet the regional housing needs assessment, and it would eliminate the debate between which property to rezone. So, I'm just gonna address some concerns, but before that, I want to go into a little bit of context with the property. So, the property is currently an unincorporated land, which is under the sphere of influence of Montessorino, which is why we're here today. And the real thing that I'm trying to get across with this is the fact that we are the only commercial property in Montessorino, and it's out of character, and it's out of date. The buildings are rundown, the hotel is not doing quite as well as it used to, and we'd like to change that and bring it up to character and up to speed with current Montessorino. And we think that the best way to do so would be changing it from a commercial property to a residential property. So its current uses, we have two bars, a restaurant, a motel, a beer garden, and office space on the property, with up to 1,330 total daily potential occupants. That's obviously a maximum, but we do have a significant number of people come in and off of the property on a daily basis. With development, should it proceed, this number would be dramatically reduced to approximately 91 total potential occupants, and that's an estimate based on the survey the city did. And so, with regards to the reduction in occupants, that has a lot of ramifications on the project and the city as a whole, and I'd like to address some of those concerns, you know, traffic, public agencies, et cetera. So first, I'm gonna begin with public benefits. The, or the project would result in $1.4 million in fees for the city, just over half a million of which would go to the schools, just under half a million will go to the city, and just over $400,000 is going to go to public agencies. There's also going to be an increase in property tax revenue to the city, which could go to our police and fire. The report indicates that no new police officers or firemen would need to be hired as a result of development, so that's just another, something to add. Another, you know, common concern is the environmental consequences, and as previously discussed, we have done our job and worked with city staff to ensure that the environmental impacts are going to be, quote, "less than significant," and that's going to be achieved by preserving the oak woodland in the back of the site, as well as planting over 100 trees and doing extensive landscaping on the Highway 9 corridor to beautify it. And speaking of Highway 9, a lot of you are concerned about traffic, and this is an interesting topic. And so, essentially, as the mitigated negative declaration indicates, there's going to be 71 fewer daily trips, some of which are, a small majority of which are going to be during peak hours, and this is most likely due to the fact that there's going to be less in-and-out traffic at the restaurant and bar. As you know, when you go to a restaurant, you're only there for an hour or two, versus when you go home at night, you're usually there for the whole night. There's also going to be a reduction or elimination of the traffic on Fridays and Saturdays as a result of the live music, which draws in a lot of people every Friday and Saturday, so that traffic is also going to be eliminated. Which brings me to noise levels, which are also going to not increase as a result of development, so there's not gonna be any more live music or con- So, there's not going to be any more live music or concerts. There aren't going to be any more restaurant or bar noises. As you may know, those are some of the more noisy commercial establishments as, you know, things go. So, there's also not going to be motel traffic. And the DMN, or, sorry, MND, mitigated negative declaration report indicated the biggest risk for noise increase would be due to traffic. And as I just mentioned, traffic is going to be reduced as a result of development. And so, my last and final point is going to be preserving and protecting the integrity of Montessorino and our neighborhood as a whole. And to illustrate this point, I think a question should be asked. And that's whether, or what you think about when you think about Montessorino as a whole. Do you think about restaurants, bars, live music, hotels? I'd argue that you typically would think of a quiet residential neighborhood that's fairly peaceful, where the loudest thing you'd hear on a daily basis is probably a lawnmower. And, you know, this would, this development would not only increase property value, but it would provide a beautification of the scenic corridor. It would provide residential houses and more housing options for those who want to live in Montessorino but don't need or want a single-family home. And just as a whole, it would fit in better with the character of Montessorino as a primarily residential or entirely residential city. To conclude, I'm going to show you what our property will look like in 10 years in two photos. I think the photos speak for themselves.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, councilmember. My name is Robert Lee with WHA Architects and Planning. So, I'm the project planner on this. We kind of, my colleague Mark Rutherford is the architect. So, just kind of on the slide, this is the site plan that you saw presented by staff. And I just want to highlight some of the stuff that, sorry, kind of identified. But illustrate here, we have the 11 single-family highlighted in the light yellow. Those are kind of outlined on the perimeter of the project to be adjacent to the existing residents. And then, we have the slightly higher-density single-family court homes in the center of the project. Four of those are attached by the garage in order to meet the multifamily requirements. We also have four of those duplex court homes at the very front of Highway 9. Now, along Highway 9, we mentioned we are extending the landscape buffer along Highway 9 in order to address the scenic corridor requirement. The closest part of the home will be about 41 feet from the edge of the Highway 9, and they'll expand up to about 60 feet and greater. So, that entire area of the front of those homes will be landscaped with a significant amount of trees, as you saw in the photos just previously. And then, we have seven attached townhomes that are low-key in the very far back. Is the dark brown just back here is integrated into the hillside. So, it's kind of a two-story townhome with the garage integrated into the, into the grade of the area. Parking was raised at our community open house about two months back. And I just want to state that the project will accommodate over 110 parking spaces on-site. 73 of those spaces will be in the garages. 17 will be on driveways as outlined in the blue. So, some of the homes on the perimeter will have either a one-car or two-car possibility on the driveways. And there are 20 guest parking spaces distributed throughout the site. Whoops. I just hand it over to Mark, kind of go over the architectural feature of the project.
Evening, Mayor Craig and councilmembers. Mark Rutherford with WHA Architecture. I've been an architect in the Bay Area for over 35 years. Been involved in quite a few infill projects, working within a number of communities up and down the peninsula and surrounding here, also Saratoga, Los Gatos, Palo Alto, Menlo Park. So, quite a bit of infill experience, working in projects that are similar to this, where a use within a development community has kind of outlived its usefulness, and there's an opportunity for change. And I think this is a perfectly example of taking this property and trying to find that common thread to weave it into the community in the context of the surrounding homes. And so, here with the 36 homes, we're really providing, I think, quite a bit of traditional architecture with a lot of detailing, a lot of amassing changes, roof pitches, a lot of high-quality detailing in the materials. And I think something that is going to be a real legacy for the city of Montessorino. So, what we're showing here, right here, right now, are the larger homes on the perimeter and showing you a typical streetscape. You can see over on the right-hand side on the land plan, those four homes that would, that are presented here on that streetscape there. And this streetscape here represents the smaller court homes. So, these ones here are entered, they're garages off of a motor court, so at the rear of the homes. All of these homes, the ones I presented before, and these ones here, all have two-car garages. The larger homes do have some parking on the driveway aprons. These ones do not, but they do have two in the garage. Then, there is guest parking on-site. And the homes themselves, these ones range from about a little over 1,700 to about, I'm going to say, 2,050 square feet. The larger homes are in the neighborhood of 3,000 square feet, maybe up to like 3,050. There is one custom on the site which may go up to 3,300 square feet. These are the duets. So, these are the homes that, it's two homes that are about 1,760 square feet. They'll front onto the Highway 9. And then, if you see the interior street, you see that's the look from the interior, from the rear of it. And they're accessed on the ends, on left and right sides. And they have quite a bit of manipulation there with the amassing, breaking down the single stories, a few dormers. And I think just something that appears from Highway 9 is a large home or two large homes, because there is a total of two buildings for four units in that location. And these homes are at the back of the site, so at the south end. And the garages themselves are tucked into the hill. So, it really is kind of a retaining wall with the garage tucked into the hill. And it has the living levels above. And off the second level itself, there actually is access to the rear, you know, that abuts next to the oak woodland area. So, they have some outdoor space there, but they also have some deck space. Some of them have that up front. And again, kind of high quality as far as the architectural materials, design, and detailing.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. I'm Philip Vander Tullen with VTA Landscape Architects and the president of the company. I'm here to walk through the landscape site plan for you. And you've seen this plan many times this evening before. There was a discussion about the number of trees. So, there are 66 trees that'll be removed from the site. And we're going to replace back 136 trees. Backs almost doubling the amount of trees that are going to occur within the project area. We looked carefully at the Highway 9 frontage because we know the concerns of the architecture onto the street. So, we're specifying or proposing redwood trees, combination with oak trees, and then some under-story trees of the redbud trees. Something indicative of the landscape that you see on the streetscape as you drive up down Highway 9 and up into the mountains as well. So, we're trying to replicate some of that. But as time goes on, it's a screening element to have the project mesh with the rest of the community. With the rest of the site, we're looking at various tree components. All the color coding you can see on there, which I won't go through all of them because it's kind of hard and fuzzy to see. But nonetheless, we are looking at opportunities where feasible to place trees. There was a, there was a very important oak tree that was maintained on the site. And I'm just going to stand up and just point to it. It's in this area right here. The site plan was actually modified in order to protect that tree. So, there was an effort in order to maintain that tree onto the site. With the landscape, very quickly, we are required to meet the state water requirements. We live in a drought. It's not happening now, but we'll be living with the rest of our lives. So, the plant materials that were selected for this site are of a drought significance. They'll meet the state's water requirements. So, from a standpoint of landscaping, it should be minimal impact, okay? We also made an effort to work with our neighbors to the west, met with them on two occasions. And what this slide is showing is, in addition to the landscaping that's occurring within the streetscapes, we're also proposing to put evergreen trees, vertical screen trees, in the backyards of the six homes that'll join our three neighbors to the west. And at the same time, we've met with them and we're proposing to put trees in their backyards and also to mitigate and screen the new homes that are going in. And we're still working on this plan. We actually met with the homeowners again today and looking at additional trees within the yard. So, we're trying to work with our neighbors to make sure that our landscape meets not only the project's expectations, but work with our neighbors to meet their expectations as well. So, with that, turn it back over.
Hello again. I'd just like to conclude this presentation with the fact that we're trying to work together with the city. We want to meet their housing needs. We want their, or, their needs to be fulfilled, fulfilled, sorry. Our needs to be fulfilled. And we've worked closely with the city and with our neighbors and with the residents of this community to make this something that you will be proud of. Now is the time to support Montalvo Oaks. I'd like to finish with a, once again, a view of the project in 10 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we started on my right side the last time. We'll start on the left. Councilmember Rogers, any questions for the presenters?
I guess my only question was, where did you get the 1.4 million in fees?
You can come up and use the podium mic.
This is to the applicant.
To the city. I'm wondering where that, where that figure came from.
It came from a calculation based on information provided to us by the city in terms of what the school districts would charge for the housing. And then, we did calculations available based on public information for the other agencies. So, it's a pretty standard process that you go through to calculate it. And we've substantiated it. I've sent it to city staff months ago for their review of it as well. So, we feel confident that that's an accurate number.
Okay. Councilmember Ann standing? And if I, oops. If I can follow up with that, what is the gross amount of revenue that's generated to produce 1.4 million in the taxes that you just identified from the sale of these homes?
That's not property taxes. Those are strictly fees that are paid. So, those are fees that are paid to the city for processing fees. There are fees that are paid directly to the schools for impact fees, as was noted earlier by staff. The school district set a particular fee, and we are assessed based on project square footage and et cetera, et cetera. So, those costs are all figured out. It has nothing to do with property tax. The property tax is a separate windfall that will go to the cities and to the county.
Thank you. Can you estimate for us the fair market pricing for each of these types of homes that you're going to be building for us?
We don't set the market price until the project's completed. But I can tell you the average-priced home in Montessorino right now is $2 million, and the average income in Montessorino is $2 million. So, when you do the math on that, if you make $200,000 a year, you can afford a million-dollar house. That's where Montessorino is. So, you're basically at, your current median value is at 50% of what people make, so.
So, do you have an estimate, then, of what the, you know, selling out all these homes, what the gross revenues would be from that?
Not at this time.
But you're still proposing to do it?
Yes, absolutely.
Also, the single-family, I'm sorry, the attached dwellings that are on the south side of the property, I think your representative said they were two-story buildings. Those are actually three stories, aren't they?
No, they're not. There are a garage retaining wall and then two levels of living space.
But the structure itself is three stories.
They're built into the side of the hill, so they're in dirt. So, the portions that are outside of that are two-story.
Outside.
It's fairly typical, Marshall. It's a normal type of construction for a home or, in this case, multifamily units that are built in a hillside.
So, our report is incorrect. It says three stories? Is that, because it says three stories with the toe into the...
It's three-story at the front facade, but at the rear, it's the two levels of living space. So, as the garage is built into the toe of the hill, when you stand in front of the garage, you will see the three stories. But you go around the back, you'll see the two stories.
Yeah.
So, it's both.
Okay. Now, our report also indicates that the single-family homes are up to 3,500 square feet with four bedrooms? That's what our report indicates. Is that correct?
Correct. The perimeter homes is correct.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Willsheimer?
For a project like this, what would be the typical construction time from breaking ground to cutting the ribbon, so to speak?
It'd be about 12 to 14 months. But a lot of that is demolition and grading, so it's not actual construct, building vertically. Takes a while to prepare the pads and...
Okay.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes. One of the concerns of the citizens is really the impact of traffic. How did you pick your third-party contractor to do this traffic study? And can you confirm the traffic impact on this proposed project, please?
We didn't pick the traffic engineer. The city did through their hired environmental consultant. So, we're not, we're not a party to that at all, other than we got to write the check for it. The city does everything, and we have, we've never had one conversation with the traffic engineer. Don't even know who he or she is. And then, the city can address the specific comments. Or I don't know if the engineer's here tonight, but...
We hired Hexagon Transportation Consultants. They've been doing traffic reports in the Greater Bay Area for decades. And again, we were under contract to the city. I'd be happy to answer any more specific questions you have regarding the traffic report.
Well, the traffic report says 71 fewer trips per day on the average. Is that correct?
Let me find that table, just so I have it in front of me. Yes. So, what the traffic consultant did was they went out and actually counted the traffic during the peak hour. In doing traffic impact analysis, we look at AM and PM peak hours because improvements are done based upon the peak hour. So, for the AM peak hour, the project would actually result in the same, the same number of trips in the AM. And in the PM peak hour, it results in a reduction of 11 trips.
So, would you conclude, then, that there is no significant impact?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Ann standing? Just one more question. With respect to the time, I think you said it was the year to 14 months possibly for construction, assuming you started upon approval by the city council. You've also asked to have up to two years, depending upon federal, state, and local approval. So, during that two-year period, is it fair to assume that you would be operating the property as it currently is in terms of the restaurant, the bar, and the hotels?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. And I have a couple of questions. So, the trees are going to be used for screening and just general landscaping. Who's going to be maintaining those?
Homeowners Association.
Okay. And that's an ongoing concern? Is it going to be an incorporated homeowners association, or how's it going to be set up?
Sure. And it will maintain the streets. It will maintain all the sidewalks. It will maintain trees, everything like that. So, yes, it's an association that's formed and it has, will have a board made up of homeowners to, you know, regulate that. And so, obviously, the people in the neighborhood can see their other neighbors and see what's going on and present an issue at the monthly board meetings.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the construction time, is it going to be staged? Or are you going to build everything and then open it? Or you'll build, let's say, the left side, people will move in. You'll build the middle, and then you'll build the right side?
It would, it would be staged to some extent. But, you know, all the grading would happen first, all the roads... all the roads would come in, and then the actual houses themselves would be in two stages.
Okay.
But that staging doesn't delay the completion.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Rogers?
Russ, are you planning on building this, or are you planning on having someone else build this?
Undetermined at this time. I mean, I would like to build it if everything goes great. We think we've done a fantastic job with Jack Rose and some of our construction out there. It shows the quality and the willingness of us to use high-quality materials and do things for the long term, even though things may not be always long-term.
And do you, if you are planning on building this, do you have experience building something of this magnitude?
Well, we would coordinate with a contractor, an experienced home builder, right? We are the developer, but that doesn't mean we're out there with a hammer and nail. Those people are hired even by the big companies. They don't all have their own crew. They hire framing crews, they hire roofers, they hire electricians, they hire all the subs, so it'll be a very similar process.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. So, at this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment. As I mentioned earlier, the speakers will have three minutes to speak, and we have a light system up here.
Don't know if everybody can see it, but there it is. And I should probably plug it back in, so it's working. There we go. Green, red, and amber, so...
Oh, I appreciate you...
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
I don't want to be over my three minutes.
No, don't. We're not going to start you yet.
All right.
So...
I mean, I know we work for the developers, so it must be flexible, but I want to make sure I at least get my comments in.
Okay. So...
June, would you state your name again?
June Payne.
Okay. I did want to say again, please, everybody be respectful of the speakers, be respectful of the topic, and let's not have clapping, or booing, or cat calls. It would really just make this whole process go a lot smoother and more comfortable for everybody. Okay. And let me know when you're ready with the timer.
I'm ready.
Okay. Thank you very much. Go ahead, June.
Thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to speak. Having reviewed the requirements for the rest of the citizens for about the past 24 years in the city plan, it seems like there should not be an exception made for this project, especially considering that there's 21 single-family homes that would be exempt from all of the requirements of every other citizen in Monteserino. It seems like doing so would raise the possibility of legal action by everyone who's had their projects denied in the last time period, as well as those going forward. I don't agree that starting in a good relationship would be done through a lawsuit, as was suggested, and I don't really think that Monteserino wants the change that this project would bring forward, as was mentioned. I think the density of the housing is way too much. The general plan doesn't allow for this. The tree removal, in the plan itself, it doesn't state that there would be an exact number of trees that would be replanted, or the size or shape of those trees, the maturity. It says where possible, so there's a lot of loopholes, in my opinion, around that. Those loopholes do not exist for current residents in projects that they bring forward, so I don't know why an exception would be made for this. The discussion was also around traffic. I think that the traffic deserves more scrutiny. I don't really think traffic reduction would be there. The project, even in the development phase, is approved, as it's written right now, for 12 hours a day, six days a week, and I think if you looked at traffic on Saturdays, having all kinds of construction traffic, et cetera, there, especially on Saturdays, would be a real problem. Noise pollution was mentioned. I think having that number of people in a dense environment would create a lot of noise, and I really don't think that this is a fit for Monteserino.
Thank you very much. Okay. And what I would like to start doing is, I'm going to call the next two speakers up, so that you can make your way forward if you happen to be in a more crowded area. So, our next two speakers are Elam Hatab Tariis and Fletcher Baker. And if the next speaker wants to just work their way up, we'll just get a line started, so we can expedite this.
My name is Shahab Hatam Tabrizi, and I'm here with my wife, Elham. We are the most impacted by this project. We share the longest border with this proposal. We are on the eastern side of this property, and the setbacks, I went and I measured with a measuring stick, the poles to the wall, is 15 feet on our side. It is 20 feet on the western edge, next to the land of Ephraim, Jeffrey, and Stewart. The second thing is that there is a three-story structure, condo. This is a straight wall going up without any breaks, 10 feet away, 10 feet setback to our property, looking into our living space that we plan to build at this property. We purchased the property a year ago to build our dream house, which is getting to be a nightmare house, the way it's going. The other thing is that the landscape architect showed trees. I wish that image was there. You will see trees next to the, on the western side, but there's actually called for removal of trees bordering our property. These are mature, beautiful trees. And furthermore, no new trees to be planted to give us the privacy. So, again, setbacks, height and aesthetics, having this three-story straight wall looking like a warehouse going up against our property, and only 10 feet away with a balcony looking into our property. The other thing is that there is a stucco wall, which is on our property, it is inside of our property, meaning that our property goes beyond this stucco wall, and this is not shown in any of the architectural or site plan drawings. We intend to maintain that, and we think this is incorrect. I'm not here, my wife and I are not here to express an opinion. We are here to express our specific issues that this property will have on our privacy and the valuation of our property. And we started this meeting with the pledge, and the pledge ends with justice for all. If you have justice on the western side, having 20 feet setbacks and planting trees, you need to have the same thing on our side of the property. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Fletcher Baker. I've lived in Los Gatos for most of my life. I just want to say that as far as meeting the housing needs of the area, I think this project is fantastic. I know, I've been following it for a while, and I'm a big, I'm in favor of it, and I think it's going to be a huge improvement for the residential nature of the Monteserino area, to have homes instead of a commercial establishment. The noise and traffic you get from Jack Rose is a lot of fun, but it's a lot of noise and traffic for the residents, and I think that this will be a huge improvement, and I'm in favor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, our next speakers are Aaron Gallardo and Tom Ashburn. So, Aaron?
Hi, I'm Aaron Gallardo, and thank you for allowing me to take the time to speak. I mean, staff, just compliments to you, all the preparation, I mean, all the detail, a lot of hard work. I've been following the project for some time, and I can, years, I think it's been a number of years, and I think at one point, I think the density considerations were upwards of 70, 80 units. And since I've been following this and reviewing this, what's been proposed recently, I was just, I was just very pleasant and surprised, and very happy to see what was happening here. I just think that I want to encourage the council to take into consideration all the detail, all the hard work, and it just, I'm for the project, and I hope that you guys tonight can make a decision to move forward. This is, there's huge effort, and the detail is just very well appreciated.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Tom? And then our next speaker is Kelly Heil.
Oh.
No, 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 no. After you.
Oh, after me.
After you.
That next speaker.
That next speaker.
So, I'm opposed to the development for really kind of a couple of simple reasons. I moved here about 20 years ago, and one of the reasons we moved into the area is because of the rural nature of the area, particularly the rural nature along Highway 9, along where this development proposal lives, on both sides of the road, particularly up toward the mountains. And, you know, over the years, and before I moved here, this city was really strict on allowing higher density to take place within this area, and some people would say overly strict, but it was very difficult to increase the density. And so, here we are now, talking about hugely increased density in probably one of the most beautiful areas in all of Monteserino. So, sort of my view is, at this point, the hundreds of people that bought homes in this area that feel the same way I do about not wanting a higher-density area, I think it's disappointing to kind of let all of us down now to kind of change the rules after we've invested our money and come into the area and enjoy living here. So, it's kind of a disappointment to me. You know, I'm not that thrilled with Jack Rose. So, I'm hoping over the years that those are the only two, those aren't the only two choices that I have, is Jack Rose or this development, that over the years, neither one of those are very good choices from my standpoint. And frankly, I'm not interested in finding more ways of getting taxes into the city. I'm really more interested in providing an environment where myself and my family can live in, and, you know, we talked about there are 91 residents in this development. How do you know how many residents are in this development? And how do you control how many residents are in the development? So, I'm really opposed to it. I'd really like to see this rural area stay as rural as possible, and so that's why, that's why we kind of feel like that it's the wrong thing to do right now.
Okay. Thank you. And Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to compliment staff and the applicant. I think it's a very nice project, and one that I believe deserves your support tonight. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Malcolm Stewart and Walter Huff.
This is yours? It's in here? So, this hasn't been loaded?
No, it hasn't. No, I gave it to Andrea when I came in. No, it shouldn't cut into my time. I'll correct you on that. If you're going to cut out my time, when I'm...
It's not going to. It hasn't gone.
Malcolm, you didn't put this on a Mac USB, did you?
It takes a second to load. I'm just kidding.
I don't even know if it's brushed all the way in. Try the other one.
Okay, Malcolm, you're out of time. Thanks, Curtis. Can I borrow it here? Let's drag Jack right in. There is, yes. Device is ready to use. Oh, something's wrong. Okay. We'll go without it. So, Malcolm Stewart, so I've spoken before on this matter, and just want to reserve the issues and objections I raised in the letter I sent to the city on May 7th. I'm actually surprised that that letter doesn't appear in the list of exhibits that were distributed to you tonight, and there's no response, so it doesn't feel that input was incorporated. So, I'm going to hit a couple of those points. I asked that somebody find that letter, because it was specifically written in response to the proposed egg deck. So, there's three core questions, I think, in that, that I want to ask that you write down and consider in a discussion afterwards, because I know that's sometimes the best way for you to describe that. There's a before-and-after effect that's described in the negative deck document that sets the baseline current density of the property, and it uses an incorrect figure in two ways. First of all, it talks about current zoning. The site is not currently zoned three units per acre. There was a 2012 offer to annex it at three units per acre, multifamily, that was not accepted by the owner of the property. The site is currently zoned R1ESR. It's under county, it's one home per acre, and that's the legal zoning. So, when you move it to eight units per acre, you're having an 800% zoning increase. Just want to make that very clear. Secondly, in the neg deck, it was determined that there's no significant impact on the aesthetics or any of the population. It's, the baseline comparison before was 40 persons living on the site. There's 20 units in the hotel, was stated tonight by your city planner, they're single occupancy, that makes 20 people if it's full. It's not full. I live next door. It's not full. Why, a shortcut was taken, and no one pulled a rent roll or asked Mr. Stanley for it. I'm sure he could have provided it, and you would have had a baseline comparison to the 36 units times 2.4, which was the last, 2.7 in the last census, of number of people per household. So, there's a before-and-after imbalance here that the MND relies on to find his conclusions, and your denominator is wrong, okay? I asked you to raise that with staff and ask. The second thing is timing on the build-out here. A question I raise is, can we get a defined timeline that this has to be built by, or it retrogrades back to existing zoning? And the reason I raise this is, again, we had an offer for three units per acre in 2012. We're now in 2017, and we're at eight, and if it gets zoned and it doesn't get built out either by Hacienda or by someone they transfer the property to, we could be sitting here in five years or 10 years and be saying, oh, God, we got to do 20 now. Housing element pressures ratcheted up. So, I think some trigger that if it's not built out, within a certain amount of time, it retrogrades. And then the third thing, it's already been raised by somebody, I do think it's a question to raise on why all development and renovations within the city have to go through site and architecture review, and this project doesn't, in terms of fairness. I think each home ought to be reviewed, each sightline reviewed, et cetera, in detail. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Walter? And then after Walter, we have John Green.
Before I start, I didn't know who I should send it to. I had your email, Marshall. I sent you a photograph just now. I don't know if you can post it up on the board. I'd like to use that as a reference. And then, you want to start it?
We don't have any way to get it up there then?
I'm not sure. If you can do this, I'm really impressed.
There's, we don't have any way to do any kind of screen casting from our mobile devices right now. Technology upgrade on the way, though.
Mayor, councilmembers, Walter Huff, I lived here for 16 years. I no longer live here, but this is near and dear to my heart. I wrote some things down, but I'd like to start first from young Mr. Stanley, talking about out of character and out of date. That might be me. But saying that, I care greatly for this town. The tragedy that I see going down through there is unbelievable. Citizens that have... Citizens that have come here and said, well, they're housing advocates, as long as it doesn't happen in my backyard. I've watched this. I've listened to the podcast. The council's taken an issue. It's wound through the city government for years, 10 years, I'm guessing somewhere close to it with Mr. Stanley. In a single move, you as a council, in a back room under the guise of litigation, have made a settlement with a negotiation, and Mr. Stanley himself says, I don't know if I'm going to build it. I'm not sure if I'm going to build it. I might build it. I'm really concerned about this. He can't tell you the number of the price that he has on a home. I can tell you, I've been working on a home for over two years. I have nine other homes that I'm working. I was just with my accountant the other day, and I give him the number, and he says, that's impossible. That's absolutely impossible. And I said, what's impossible? He says, you're less than a half a percent off. I said, trust me, I write the checks. I know. So it's very hard for me to have something like this not understandable. It was predetermined the day of the settlement that was drafted with you guys. The layout of the homes, the zoning under the planned development, it was basically, in my opinion, a freight train loaded. And quite frankly, going nowhere for the citizens that really, the most that you should have there is three to four per acre. But I'll tell you what you've also done. You violated an open government law, constitution, California constitution, Article One, Section Three. And I'll tell you exactly. It's the Foothill Communities Coalition versus Orange County. I have the number here if you'd like to have it. It's G048024. And I think you need to review this before you vote on this. I also believe that you should have this, and you should put this out as you did other things, and you should have this to the citizens for a vote, instead of somebody like me coming in and opposing and say, well, he doesn't live here anymore. As you well know, as a mayor, as a council member, I greatly care for this community. I wish Mr. Stanley well, but I don't wish it on the backs of our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Chuck Capon, and then Chris Reed.
You said I was next, John Green?
Yes, you are next.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Green. I'm a resident of Montesereno. I'm here to support the hacienda housing development approval. The site proposal is reflective of the state's requirement that we have for housing, and it offers the best solution for the city of Montesereno. I can understand that this proposal will be opposed. I understand because all of the previous proposals have been opposed, so that makes sense to me. Unfortunately, this proposal is the best option because of all of the proposals that have been in front of the council and all the proposals that have been shown, this is the one that's the least negative, that fits the requirement we have, not just in that neighborhood, but as a town, as the city of Montesereno. This is the best option that we have. I think that everybody is in agreement that any development in Montesereno is not desired, and that approval of any plan really comes down to numbers. Comes down to numbers of people in the community and what everybody in the community feels. And I can say, despite the number of people here tonight that oppose this plan, I'm confident that there's an exponentially higher number of Montesereno citizens that will approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Chuck?
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. Chuck Capon from Faragot Lane. Lot of issues, traffic. I long my neighbors oppose the sanitization. We don't want the exanization of this property into the city of Montesereno for various reasons. There's a bit concerned about the increased amount of heavy traffic on Highway Nine, not only at high traffic peaks, but also during the day. There have been many bicycles deaths on this road, and I'm worried about the number that will increase as the traffic also increases. At certain times during the day, traffic is stopped as far back as the hacienda and even into Saratoga city limits. It was also brought to my attention that the property only has one exit on the Highway Nine. There needs to be at least two more exits, just for safety reasons. 36 homes are far too many to only have one exit. Density. A 900% increase in density for 36 homes is quite a bit. A real concern to me because the sewer line goes right through my property, not on the Highway Nine. I'm worried because the output could increase that sewer line, which means that they're going to have to come in and tear up my driveway, my landscaping, my fencing, my property, and I'm completely against this. I long my neighbors would go along with the county's zoning of a total of four homes on this hacienda property, and with the council who has already approved the zoning on this same amount. Formula. The state uses a formula to decide low-income housing, also multi-zone housing. By adding 36 homes to the mix, the formula would be recalculated and would add 36 more homes to the existing homes of Montesereno, and would up the number of low-income and multi-housing in the city that we'd need to have in the future. This brings to light the city would have to annex my home and others to account for the increase, and I'm very much against being annexed into Montesereno. I'm just a little bit away from the hacienda on Highway Nine and Faragot, and I've been living there since 1972. The hacienda was a historical site. I don't know why it was never zoned that, but it was a stagecoach depot at one time, and it's a great piece of property, and I really hate to see this annexed into Montesereno. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chris?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I grew up in Los Cansas, Saratoga area, lived here probably 25 years. I currently don't live in town, but I've seen what has happened with the hacienda site over the years. It was totally functionally obsolescent in the market, and I think this is an opportunity for the city council and residents here in the town to, you know, satisfy their housing element. Every community needs to do this. It's not, we're not just focusing on, I mean, it needs to be statewide, and this is a solution for you folks to do it. That's it. I'm in support of this development.
Thank you very much. Okay, Harvey Shand, and then Heather Zadel.
My name is Harvey Shand. I've been living in Montesereno for 30 years, and I've sat in meetings like this several times, and we always seem to figure out what's wrong with a project instead of what's right. I'm convinced and a strong supporter of this project because I've seen cooperation between the town and the construction and owner of the property. And I am convinced that many of the issues, I'm sure most of them, if not all, that have been brought up so far and continue to be brought up, will be resolved. And I'd like to see something that will satisfy the state requirement so we don't continually go through these exercises. But those are my comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Heather? And then after that is Kevin Zadel.
Hello, my name is Heather Zadel, and I've been a resident of Montesereno for the past 20 years. Our kids have grown up here. They've been a part of the Montesereno Youth Commission, and they've been in numerous parades representing Montesereno. We love this city. I'm here tonight to urge the council to do the right thing tonight. Please approve the hacienda project and move the city in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you must be Kevin?
I'm Kevin. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Zadel. I'm Heather's husband. So my wife and I have lived in Montesereno for 20 years, and we've raised our children here. Now we deviate a little bit on the script. I approve of the hacienda Montalvo Oaks proposed housing development for the following reasons. Number one, it is the best use for this property. Number two, it would provide a fantastic place to live for my children or for my wife and I when we downsize. How nice would it be to have our children close or have a choice for us to stay in the community that we have lived in for decades? Number three, it will relieve the burden of this additional housing from the church site on Dave's Avenue that was opposed to the multifamily zoning for their site in the first place. Let's let the church be the church. And number four, we should do our part to help with California's housing shortage and approve this project. Let's do the right thing.
Thank you very much. Theodore Hartlib and Sean Luthold.
Thank you. I am currently a resident at the hotel. I've been there for about four years, and my main concern is whether it takes two years or six months, I'm going to be homeless. This isn't addressed. I can't afford anything else, and once I do leave, I go on a waiting list. I know people that are single men that have been on the waiting list for 10 years to get housing. Nothing for me. Don't, I don't approve. Don't, don't do it. Please.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Sean Luthold, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to address the fact, a few points. The council is familiar with how we've gotten here, but let's review a little bit. First, the First Baptist Church site is also part of this discussion, and it's well on its way to being formally rejected on the November ballot if we end up going that route. And if the hacienda project isn't approved before the end of June, it's my understanding that we will be proceeding that direction. That's going to cost the city another $40,000 in sunk costs if we go beyond the end of June, according to what I've read by the mayor's comments. Once the church site is rejected, if this goes that route, the city loses its bargaining power with Mr. Stanley, and we really are looking at a situation where we may not be in control of the number of units the way we are with the current proposal. We're going to have to solve the issue of the hacienda, which was on the cusp of trial when you entered into the settlement agreement with Mr. Stanley, with the agreement to explore this 36-home project. The settlement with Mr. Stanley allows him to move ahead with his case the moment that this project stalls. And depending on tonight's vote, if you vote this down, Mr. Stanley, I understand, has the right to go forward with his lawsuit and put that back on the trial calendar immediately if he feels that this is not going forward. This isn't holding a gun to our head, but this is holding us to the commitments that were made to explore this and go forward or face the potential consequences. The problem from our perspective as citizens and yours as council members is that Mr. Stanley is likely to win on the issues in his lawsuit. That's going to trigger state intervention in our building permit process potentially, and it's going to lead to far greater scrutiny of our housing element, including not only multifamily, but the low-income units issue. That could be a real problem. The city and staff has put together a win-win plan, settling this suit with Mr. Stanley and limiting the hacienda to 36 units. We were talking about 80 units and more when prior Mayor Lon Allen was running last time. So we're really at the best-case number that we've ever had to solve the issues that would be acceptable both to the city and to Mr. Stanley. We need to take this and take advantage of it while it's available. This isn't something that just come up, and it's not something that's going to benefit from delay or more study. In just a few weeks, we're going to be wasting $40,000 putting this on the ballot, the First Baptist Church issue on the ballot. You've got an obligation to protect Montesereno from the consequences of an attorney's fees award, which was likely to be several hundred thousand dollars in favor of Mr. Stanley if the litigation goes forward. So those issues, I know, have all been considered, and I think they should be considered as we go forward, not as a threat, but just as the reality of the situation. So let's do the right thing. Thank you to staff and council for finding a workable solution to everyone's problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have Kathy Smith, and then Peter Leav.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to thank all of you. I know, especially the council members, don't get paid for this, and you certainly don't get glory for this. So thank you for your service. I really appreciate it. I've lived in Montesereno since 1985 and the Bay Area my entire life. None of us like change. I liked the farms that were there, but it's different. People need a place to live, so I totally understand why the state's doing it. My only question to you is if, for some reason, this doesn't go through, I know we have to designate 15 units. So let's say we designate 15 units, and then they demand that we build them. Do we have any other option? That's my only question.
Okay, thank you very much. Peter? Okay. Michael Lacorza. And then after that, Catherine Hall.
Hello, Michael Lacorza. I'm a neighbor of the property, live on Blythewood above what is now Jack Rose. And, you know, in a prior life, I was a real estate developer at a really very large firm. And there are a few things that kind of struck me about what's going on in this whole process and how it's matriculated. The first is, is how, the fast pace of processing all of these permits simultaneously without as much sort of commentary and consideration as you might have. A number of the detailed questions that other folks have raised haven't really been addressed, I don't think, by the developer and staff yet, and it feels like you're rushing toward this deadline. The other speaker mentioned a gun to your head. It sort of feels like it's working along that dimension. The other thing that struck me about it is the question of Mr. Hans Standing about the pro forma for prices. I don't know any real estate developer who hasn't made those kind of calculations. And the fact that, simple question like that, material question, to understand things like what would be the impact of the property values and surrounding properties who have certain valuations now, and how would that compare to what's going to be built, the developer refused to answer the question, or sidestared the question. So this struck me as, wow, this isn't really a developer that's coming in to want to work transparently and openly and honestly. Now, granted, this is coming on the heels of, you know, multi-year litigation, so I can understand some level of trepidation, but if a new page has been turned, then there should be an open kimono and full transparency on some of these really material questions. So I'm someone who generally supports growth and development, responsible development, but I oppose this project at this time for a couple of reasons. One, the density is too high for the character of this location. There's a reason why it was zoned the way it was zoned, is because that's the character of this place. And when you increase the density eightfold for this very small piece of property, it dramatically changes the character of the place where we live. And I don't think that's the right way to approach it. I think some of those questions around the valuations of the property and the impact that it will have on neighbors and the area need to be probed, need to be examined, until we understand some of those impacts, or at least have some reasonable economically-driven calculations, and understand what the impact might be to those neighbors. We should be pausing and assessing that first. So at this point, I don't support the plan. I think developing it could be a great idea, but it needs to be done in a responsible way, and it's not quite there.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Catherine Hall, and everyone's saying how long they've lived in Montesereno. We've been here 52 years, and I am going to save Montesereno some money. I've been reading about the alumbin clay under the property at La hacienda. One study says that it's 13 and a half feet down. Another, the Santa Clara Foundation, said it's 27 feet down. Now, I don't know if everyone's aware of what this clay is, but it might be the reason that the building in San Francisco is shrinking two inches every year. It's going right down. So I think the, the study made by GeoCon is way, way, way too vague. You have not done your diligence here. And I think you are going to be very sorry if suddenly houses slip down, and not only will Russ Stanley be sued, but Montesereno, because you knew about it. It's right in your study, right here. Now, you could have Montesereno bankrupt if that happens, and I think you better have a review. I'm in touch with the geologist in the county, and I'd like to put this on hold, table it, until he comes out with an accurate report, because this is way too vague if you read it. Well, maybe, or it could be, or we'll have to study it further. It's right here. It's been written right here by whoever wrote this. Look at this. Any changes in design, location, will have, will have to be seen by GeoCon when it happens. You don't wait for something to happen. You do it before it happens. Okay, now, my next subject, oh, I only have 57 seconds. My next subject, aside from the soil, are the trees. I'm the tree Nazi of Montesereno. Everyone knows that. Okay. The place is being called Montavo Oaks. There aren't going to be any oaks left. He's cutting down 29 oaks. Does anyone believe in climate change or the environment? You all are lacking something by not understanding that the trees help the air. What has happened? It used to be $10,000 if you cut down a tree, an oak tree that was well. The county told me, the board of directors told me, it is now $12,000 an oak tree. So Mr. Stanley will have to pay that and then replace it with three or four little sticks. Now, what good is that going to do for the environment? Shame, shame, shame. Please, think, think seriously before you do that. The soil, which is clay, and the trees. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Phil Levine and then Tom Gleason.
You guys, you needed a bigger place.
I know.
Okay, good evening. Welcome. First, I'd like to thank everybody for doing the hard work, especially the staff. You guys are doing an amazing job, and you're heading in the right direction, no matter what the decision. They're our new city manager, is really doing a great job. I think I've been talking to you guys for almost 10 years. Guys, it's time for you guys to make a decision. Don't delay. I'm really scared we're going to go into analysis paralysis, a lot of engineers here, a lot of MBA types like myself. We can analyze the numbers to the end of time. I think you need to make some decisions. We voted you guys in to make some decisions. Stop kicking the can down the road. Second item I'd like to make, point I'd like to make is, we need to show a lot of respect for our neighbors, but at the bottom line of this thing is, this is an issue for Montesereno voters, because we're the ones that have to pay the fines, we're the ones who vote you guys in, and we're also the ones that are going to have to pay the cost if this gets sued by the state. So please keep in mind, it's nice that folks coming from the outside are coming in, and we have to respect our neighbors, but the bottom line is, you guys are voted in by Montesereno voters and citizens, and I think you need to remember that when you're hearing all these visitors. It doesn't mean you don't pay attention to everybody else, but you've got to give us a little bit more weight. Hopefully you do. We talked about the delay. I also like to bring up the issue, the alternative solution here is with the church. Everybody's worried about the traffic and Route 9, but we're talking about a cross from school and a church. NIMBY's great, but we're not talking about it in my backyard, we're really talking about the school's backyard and the church's backyard. So everybody's trying to personalize this, but we got like 500 kids in Dave's Avenue. We got a lot of kids in the church. Think of them, don't think of the people that are around, and I think you really got to keep that in mind. I think it's time we provide a housing solution. We're talking from a Montesereno perspective, but we're part of the Bay Area. We're not orphans. We have a moral responsibility to chip in some housing. We're not, we're not exceptional. We have higher income, we have higher all sorts of things, we got nice jobs, but that doesn't alleviate us responsibility to help with the Bay Area, even if it's a small way. I constantly hear people that think we're above it all because our income and our prices are higher. That's just not true. We have a responsibility too, even though we're smaller, and I hope you take that into account. As far as motivation goes, hopefully you're going to use a positive motivation, because you're going to help with housing some, even though it might be more expensive than you want. But the negative motivation, I believe in positive motivation, is there is a possible lawsuit that's going to come back, there's added cost that's going to come back, and we're not going to let that vote go through. I think it's most likely going to vote, get voted out in the fall. I think that zoning is not going to be an option in the fall, and I think I'd seriously take Mr. Luthold's input, as being accurate. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you come to the right decision. I think this looks like a good project, and I'll leave the details to the neighbors, and we'll comment on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi. Yeah, Tom Gleason, the 40-year resident of Montesereno. I'm in favor of the project on its own merits. You know, the owner wants to develop his property. He's patiently followed the rules, the regulations, got the work done. I've seen no new information here tonight that changes my view. There's a lot of issues, but I think you can get through all those. When you get through, you're going to have an enclosed community, and when the landscaping matures, it's going to be, be a real benefit to Highway 9. So I'm in favor of it and hope you are too. So that's all.
Thank you very much. Okay, Philippa Alves and Matt Edes.
Hello.
Hello again, mayor, council members. We all love Montesereno, that's why we all live here. But times change and needs change, and we have to be able to change with it. Talking time is over. We have a plan on the table that reflects many months of specific talks, negotiations, modifications, comparisons, adjustments, hearings, and public input. What we need now is a decision by our Montesereno council to move forward with courage to launch the state-mandated permanent housing. Gone are the days of stopgap promises of zoned land for possible future development, as you know. The state no longer accepts that. They require actual building to be built to answer the housing needs of our community and the area. We have a responsibility to do our best. You have that in the planned development that has been presented to you tonight. I had to write it. The planned development of the Hacienda does not provide, does, excuse me, provide a viable site for a real neighborhood of various types of housing that will fulfill the state requirement housing element for the city. And these types of housing that will fit, will fit the needs of housing for the Silicon Valley house shoppers. They're searching for homes. It will be a step toward the future that our current council can and should take tonight. No more stalling, no more shilly-shallying, no more looking for little excuses not to act and trying to get out of meeting state requirements. No more lawsuits that squander Montesereno taxpayers' money. Not everyone's going to be happy with the increase of density in this planned development, but unfortunately, it's the coming in availability for Montesereno and other communities. We urge the council tonight to vote for the Hacienda in property plan development. It is the option not to comply with the state requirements. We know that this is a difficult decision, and it takes courageous people to make decisions like this. We trust that the council is courageous and will vote for the excellent planned development that is not uncommon in other areas. We must accept change.
Thank you very much. Matt? Matt Edes? Okay. Kevin Crawford. And after him, Gary Effin.
Good evening, council. Kevin Crawford. I'm a resident of the area, Los Gatos, for the last 50 years, and I'm speaking on behalf of the project, asking you to vote yes. Several reasons. First of all, the development, I think, is going to be compatible. We've heard opposing views on that. We've also heard about greater densities and throughout the state of California and the urgent need for more housing. One speaker spoke of having a place for his children to live, downsizing in their later years. These are relevant issues we all have to address today, and we can't say, well, let's do that somewhere else. We all have to dig in and say, we're going to, we're going to do a project, we're going to allow a project that's been well-considered, well-planned, and has a strong financial backing. Okay, so there's two examples that I would like to point to your attention. One is, I think are very similar. One is the Villa Felice project that Ropes &amp; Homes designed and built back in 2008, Winchester Road overlooking Visona. I think we all remember that back in 2008. That was a very contentious project, and if you look at it today, it's seamless. You drive down Winchester Boulevard and you say, this, this is a lovely development. Secondly, Heritage Grove on Blossom Hill Road at Union Avenue. That was an orchard, and it was developed into a master-planned, single-family. The beneficial impact on all the surrounding homes has been 10x, at least in terms of valuation. I also like to point out that that development has one exit, went to Blossom Hill Road. So in summary, let me say that, in looking at the, the quality of the materials and, and the service and the delivery that we've seen at Jack Rose over the last x number of years, I think that we're going to be able to, be able to say with some confidence that this project's going to be done with the same level of professionalism, and when it's all said and done, it will be compatible with the community. So I encourage you to approve, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, council members, my name's Gary Effren. I'm a neighbor of the property. I guess I don't have the longest property line with La Hacienda. I think the gentleman over there has the longest one. I have only 200 feet, four homes behind it. Russ Stanley and his landscape architect, Phil, have been to visit my house to take a look at the impact on our side, and we've had a very good dialogue. It actually was presented today, there was a slide showing a proposal for some trees, and as Philip said, they're going to be making some further modifications. My comment is really a request to make sure that the resolution that includes the tree removal permit and specifies currently that 66 trees are being removed and 136 trees are being planted specifically includes the proposal that Mr. Stanley and Philip have, have made. And I just would like to see that included in the resolution. This, the trees that are going to be planted according to that would provide the proper kind of screening for the four homes, two-story homes that are going to be overlooking my property. So again, it's just a request to include it in the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm coming down to the end of the cards, so if anybody else would like to speak, please bring a blue card forward, and we'll add you to the stack. So Vidya and Wanda Alexander.
Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you guys today. My name is Vidya. I've only been here eight years, as opposed to some people who have been here 50 years. But I've been an active member in the community. My husband has been on the site in Architecture Commission for a couple of days, a couple of years, and my, both my kids are on the Montesereno Youth Commission. I'm here to talk against the proposed development, not specifically so strongly, because I do understand the need for multifamily housing and the state-mandated requirement for that. But I do have a few questions regarding this project that I would like to place before you. The first thing is, when I look at the project plan, the one thing that strikes me is it's going to take 20 years. You know, and 20 years is a long time. I understand that change is inevitable, but 20 years is a long time to regrow, you know, some of these trees and, and bring Highway 9 back to its natural beauty. So my first question is, was there an architectural evaluation that was done to make sure that the facade that faces Highway 9 is in character with the rest of the city? So one of the things that I'm seeing in the plan is, it is the double, double-story houses, I don't know what that's, courthouses, that is lining Highway 9. So is there an evaluation of the facade that actually faces Highway 9? The second thing is, some of the numbers I feel are misleading, mainly because one of the comparisons that was given to us is 330 occupant, 330 max occupancy versus 91 occupants in the new proposed plan. I don't think that is true. What is the average occupancy rate of Hacienda, and how does that compare to a fixed population of 91 additional occupants in the new proposed plan? I don't think that is very clear at all. The second thing is, the traffic numbers also doesn't make sense, because if you only look at the peak traffic, Jack Rose does not get peak traffic every day. It is not morning traffic, it is not evening traffic. Whereas when you have residential buildings, that's going to be kids going out to school, you know, people going out to work, morning and evening. So that's going to be a fixed traffic pattern as opposed to Jack Rose, which has a more weekend traffic pattern. So I don't think that has been accounted for enough. I also don't see a good plan for addressing this traffic increase. I don't see a good plan for, you know, the increased number of school enrollments. As somebody pointed out, you know, they want their kids to move in closer to them. So it is fair to say that this new development is going to have a lot of young community, young people moving in with kids. So what is the plan to address the school increase in, in number of students? And on an average, two students per household, you know, that's an added 75 students to the school district. The Saratoga School District is a very, very small school district, only about 300 students in high school. 75 is a lot of, in new kids coming into the school district. Thank you for your opportunity.
Thank you.
Wanda Alexander, Ravine Road on Los Gatos, Loma Salina. We are the Coalition for Hillside Protection. I want to call to your attention, we've got to do a reality check on this. The reality is that we're talking about the quality of life for everyone in this area. We're talking about the air we breathe, which is what the canopy of, of trees offers us. They filter the, the air so that we get cleaner air. We're talking about the watershed of the hillside. The watershed comes down and filters through the earth and keeps us with clean water. So we're talking about the air we breathe, the water we drink, and we're talking about the quality of life in this area. Everyone here is going to be affected if we start taking incrementally, start taking down the trees and destroying this watershed area and causing mudslides and, and really serious problems. And also the wildlife that lives there, the whole, this whole area is a good place to live because of all this ambience. And that is why Montesereno was originally started. They, it was to help keep a nice livable area of, of quality of life. The county, I think, is very wise in saying, this is hillside property, only one house per acre. And I think Montesereno would be very wise to follow the county's advice and precedent in... in maintaining the quality of life in the hills. The hillsides are different from flatland, and this proposal belongs on the flatland somewhere. It is not infill, it's outfield. And so, we have to remember, it's the quality of life for everyone in our environment that we're affecting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd say vote against annexation.
Okay. Michael Trees and Joan Silberstein.
Friendly, too. No one's throwing anything yet. Okay.
Good.
Hi, my name is Michael Trees. Greetings to the council, friends, neighbors, everybody that's here. I'm a short-timer here in Montessorino, about thirty-five years, so, kind of a newcomer. I remember the first council meeting I went to, that was pretty much true. You know, people were here many, many more years than I had been. I want to address a couple of things. One is fear. When I look at why this proposal is going forward, I think it's mostly because of fear. There are some very good reasons to go forward that have to do with wanting more housing. I think those are interesting. But I think the primary motivators are fear. Fear of Sacramento, Sacramento, the big bully is going to come in and they're going to do all sorts of nasty things to the poor little city of Montessorino. Fear of lawsuits. We don't have a great track record with lawsuits, so, that's a pretty reasonable fear. And I think in general, it's just this kind of like overwhelming, we've got to do something, we've got to do something, we're going to be overwhelmed. And I found that very few good decisions are made out of fear. The best decisions are made out of courage. When I look at this particular proposal, you know, I look at some of the things that have been passed around, like, oh, my gosh, if we don't do this one, we're going to end up having to do the one at the school and at the church. If we don't do this one, we're going to have eighty units, if we don't do this, and so on. Those are all fear-based. Those are not based on what the actual requirement is. The city has to meet a fifteen multifamily unit requirement. That's it. Fifteen units, that's all we have to meet. If we want to do something very altruistic, why not put eighty units there? Why not put sixty units on the school grounds? This is not about altruism. This is not about doing anything other than succumbing to fear. In all due respect, I think the developer has taken advantage of the situation and could quite easily reduce the number below twenty, could adhere to the existing setbacks the city already has in terms of being further from property lines, preserving more of the trees and other parts of the environment, and reducing the impact on those forty acres. This property sits on approximately half acre. Can you imagine nine units on just where the city is? Why not tear down this whole edifice and put up nine housing units here? That would take care of half the issue, just by getting rid of the city council chambers and the post office and everything else. Tear it down. Put nine units up here. Half your problem is solved. So, in all due respect, to Mr. Stanley and friends and people that are supporting this, to my neighbors who are also supporting it and who I have great respect for, I think the city is succumbing to fear and should show some courage in trying to come up with a better proposal that reduces the impact and better accommodates what we would see as what has been Montessorino and what can continue to be a pleasant place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Joan?
I have lived in Montessorino for about twenty-five years, thirty years. And I agree with what Michael just said. It seems that a lot of this is being done because we're afraid of what's going to happen. I think I'm afraid of traffic. The traffic studies, I think, may have been obsolete because we have all this new, new developments coming in. We have the North Forty, we don't know what that's going to do. And we have Winchester. So, I think that, that to approve a project at this stage is just not right. I also think that, that asking to be annexed and then saying, well, now that we're annexed, now we want all the rules changed just for us, is a little bizarre based on the fact that the rest of us had to go by all the rules that were existing. And as far as trees goes, when I built our house, which is on over an acre, we had ninety-two dedications. And we had to get a permit for every single one of those dedications to take them out. So, taking away live oaks, I don't know how that all of a sudden is going to be good. So, I would strongly urge you guys to rethink this and to not approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, Johnny Carson said, I hold the last, the last card, so. Carl Gordino. How's the weather out there?
It's almost morning. We're bringing in breakfast. Mayor, Mayor Craig, members of the council. My name's Carl Gordino, and my wife and I and our three children live about a hundred and fifty yards from here. And we're absolutely newcomers, only living here in Montessorino for the past seven years. I have to say, though, how impressed and appreciative I am of this council and this community coming here tonight as neighbors. Everyone has been able to speak freely with all sides of the issue, without anyone being heckled or booed or hissed. And in my day job, I'm occasionally in other communities throughout the region and before other councils. That is not the case. And this speaks so well to everyone that is here this evening and the tone that you set. We do have a housing crisis in California. It's been decades in the making, and it's not going to be solved overnight. The crisis is even worse in the Bay Area, and it's even worse here in Silicon Valley and the West Valley. We're always pleased when we're able to have jobs here. And in the last six years alone, this region has added twenty-nine percent more jobs. And that is wonderful, because we want people to be employed who are looking for work. During those same six years, our population has only grown by eight percent. But our homes in this entire region have only increased by four percent. And we wonder why they are less and less affordable for ourselves, our neighbors, let alone our kids. And by the way, most of that population is by birth, not by migration. We like each other a lot, and we continue to show it. We heard earlier that we have a choice of about four homes, one per acre on this site. And I'm sure they'd be lovely, multimillion-dollar homes that very few folks could afford. This plan is for up to thirty-six homes of several types, allowing several price points, single-family, townhomes, and condominiums. That, to me, is an opportunity for folks at different income levels, still not affordable by the legal sense, but of different income levels, to join and be a part of our community or to stay in our community. Again, the tenor and tone tonight has been so refreshing. Thank you to everyone that's here and on this dais for being so civil. In a moment, like many others, I'll go home and put two of three children to bed, one better already be to bed. But I will say, I hope that I put them to bed tonight, because we're building a community where there'll be a few more homes with a few more beds for other children in our future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back to the council. And I would like to have our, let's see, who wants to go first? I'll ask for volunteers this time. Go ahead, Councilmember Rogers.
Okay. This is definitely a tough decision. And, and I kept a scorecard here. And after scoring who said was for it, who was against it, it came out exactly even. So, you guys all had good points, but as far as, you know, it didn't sway one side or another. You know, I'm, I guess I'm a little worried about the future. Because I saw a council in the past that probably would have put eighty units in. And I, I don't want to see that. So, that's, I've got my yeses and my noes, but that's one of the main reasons I think I would vote yes. The other issues are stopping the litigation, of course. You know, the expense of the referendum, it's, it's costly. The, this temporary removes the state mandate for multifamily housing. And, you know, it allows people in Monte Serrano who want to stay here, people who really, you know, want to downsize, like me. I, I want to move into a smaller house, and this would be, be perfect. That would be the reason for my yes votes. Now, the reason for my no votes are, you know, democracy. Sometimes I feel like that's kind of missing in this country. You know, we're, you know, putting major issues up to our citizens to decide. I think that's, that's one of the reasons that there, there could be a vote. And it does change the rule and feel of Monte Serrano, and something that's important to many of the citizens. And finally, you know, try, try to wait, can we wait this out and get a more reasonable development? And I'm not sure if we can. I think, you know, I've been doing this, I was on the council for four years, took a couple of years off. All four years, we worked on this. This is two more years.
Sorry, can you stay close to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You know, and I, I just, I would love, honestly, to see a more reasonable development on this site. I think thirty-six, thirty-six units is too much. But I'm also, I'm also worried. We're going to have, we're going to have two or three new council people coming on. The council, before I got on, they wanted, they possibly could have voted for eighty units. And that, that, that really scares the hell out of me. I do not want eighty units. You know, I'm still trying to decide voting yes or no on this thing, but it really is a toss-up. And I did want to say one other thing, and this, this is a side note. The people that live behind there, I can't understand why they would be, why you guys would be against it. Because to me, what would I rather have in my backyard? A bar and a restaurant or houses? I really think it's going to help your property values. You know, that's not, that's not part of my decision here, but I really can't really see where you guys are coming from. Because I know if I lived back there, I would rather have a housing development than a bar. So, I'm going to listen to everybody else on the council and make my decision and come up with it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Ann standing?
Sure, I'll go next. You know, I, many of the speakers commented behind this, and I think it's, it's, it's well, it was well said and very well deserved that the, I want to compliment our staff for the very, very hard work they put into this project and the, and the vendors that we contracted with to do the work that they did. If, this is not an easy process to put together, and many of you have had the opportunity of reading and looking at the many documents that have been produced. And some of it's very confusing, because none of us, not all of us see this all the time. And then I think our city folks did a wonderful job putting it together. I likewise, I would like to compliment Mr. Stanley and his company for putting together what has been a long-awaited development plan. When you go back in history and look at how this all developed, and I, and, you know, I guess I had the fortune or misfortune of being on the council for the last ten years and dealing with this, almost ten years, and dealing with this from the very beginning. And in the very beginning, when I first came on the council, I was invited to the La Hacienda Real Estate offices and looked at, there were three different projects. And one of them that seemed very appealing, and actually, some of you commented on it tonight, was the idea that when we move out of the larger homes that we live in in Monte Serrano, and if we choose that we want to stay here, is there someplace we can go to? Someplace a little bit smaller, something a little bit more affordable? Which I think is a, is certainly an appropriate, you know, thought to keep in mind. And that concept, you know, is, in particularly poignant this past weekend, when I had to move my ninety-three-year-old mother into a senior retirement community. It's multifamily, but her residence, where she lives, is on one floor. That's not part of this project. This project, even, you know, for all of the, all of the sites, includes, you know, two-story facilities. And one of them are, are three stories. And even though the people that represented this said it wasn't true, it is. It's three stories. And I don't know that it fulfills that requirement for the seniors. And that part of it is really problematic to me. But when we go back as to how this all started, we were required by the state to pre-zone or to zone fifteen units per acre, or fifteen multifamily housing sites. And we, that was a requirement of the state, not to build it, because somebody asked the question, do we have to build it? The answer is no. It doesn't have to be built, it has to be zoned. And we dealt with that issue for a very long time at the city council. And through a lot of negotiation that was done on the record in front of everyone, we had many citizens that came in and said that the zoning that was on that property, to build one home per acre with many, many thousands of square feet, it was the way it should stay, because they're in our zone of influence, and that's the way it should remain. We struck a compromise as a council. This council voted on this, and I think the vote was unanimous, maybe there was one vote against it, to allow three units per acre. And that would have permitted the ultimate conclusion to build the zoning and build the housing that would have been required to meet our housing element and satisfy the state. And that was done by the city council, that was done with your input, and it was done in an appropriate manner. And it was conducted more than, almost five years ago. Five years ago. In the last five years since then, we've had three lawsuits, but were, came against the city. And I'm not going to debate whether Mr. Stanley's lawsuits have been more meritorious than our defenses. That's an issue that's really not appropriate for this kind of a proceeding. But we've been sued three times over this, this particular issue, with respecting the development on this property and some other side-related issues. That proposal that we gave to the state complied with what the state asked us to do. And however, the state came back to us and said, we need to do something within the city. And as you know, from many years ago, many of you probably attended the hearings that we had at Dave's Avenue School. And the NIMBY argument came full force. Nobody wanted any development similar to this in their backyard. So, this plan, what it does is it doesn't put it in your backyard, it puts it in the backyard of people that aren't residents of Monte Serrano. You know, think about that for a second, because that's the solution that this, this concept comes up with. And we came up with, again, the compromise of three units per acre on this property. Now, you know, there's a lot of issues that you can look to on, in the proposal. And, and there's some really nice aspects to it. I, I can honestly tell you that, having looked at this, there's some things about this that, that I like, and some things that I don't like at all. And one of them has to do with the extreme density that, that's, that exists here. There's nothing like this in our community. Now, you can go to Los Gatos and go to certain parts of the city where you'll find it. And you may find a, a development or two in Saratoga that's way off the road, that you don't see, that's, that has greater density or has a higher degree of density. But there's nothing like this in our community. There's nothing like this, if you look at the homes and the design of the particular homes, they're very narrow, and they're very tall. Most people that are building homes in our community are not building homes like that. And if, again, there was some satisfactory solution to have something that was one floor, that provided the opportunity for single, for more senior-type living, that was, you know, affordable within the means, that might be something that would be more acceptable, as far as I'm concerned. The tree issue. We enacted a tree ordinance several years ago. And that tree ordinance talks about tearing down and cutting down trees that are diseased, trees that get in the way of enjoying the value of the property. And frankly, there's nothing I read in any of these reports that indicates that any of these trees are diseased. It's simply cutting down trees to permit construction. And frankly, building, you know, putting smaller trees into those areas, to me, does not meet the requirements of what our ordinance would call for either. And think about it, sixty-six trees that are going to be, or sixty-five, I can't remember if it's sixty-five or sixty-six, on four and a half acres. And think about when we ever approved anything similar to that on any single property lot within our city. It just has not been done. Now, building, you know, the conflict in the report, which is different from what we were told this evening, is the report says one hundred trees will be planted, and there are specific sizes for them. And that, yet, we're told this evening, and part of our report also indicates that there'll be like a hundred and thirty-five or a hundred and thirty-six. I don't know what the right number is. But I can't see the requirement to cut down that many trees in a development where, you know, where there's no disease going on, and there's nothing that's, that's awful about any of those trees, other than that they're in the way of, of what would otherwise be constr- would otherwise be constructed. I met last evening with Gary and Francie Efron, and I was at their home, and walked around their backyard and looked at the development, from what I could see from their house, they're the ones that are bordered on the west side, the west side of the development. And there's a fair amount of screening that's currently there, and this fair amount of the screening is all provided for on the side of the property that's part of this development. It's not in Gary and Francie's backyard, it's on the side of the development, which will all be taken down in terms of producing the particular lots that are involved. And, you know, it's, I think it's nice that there's some agreement with the residents who are not part of our community, who are not part of this plan, to say that they'll take care of putting more screening in there. But that's not part of this project. And that's a commitment that may not be made, because this owner may not even be developing the property. So, is that a hollow promise, or is it a promise that it's a guarantee? And without a guarantee, it seems to me that that's another false premise to be working Another issue that's been mentioned this evening is the issue about the church. You know, that's so irrelevant. That has nothing to do with this property. And I hope that you can take that into consideration. There, you know, we did not ask to spend forty thousand dollars on a vote that's coming up. That was done because there was a group of citizens that opposed what this council passed on, which was to pre-zone apartments that could be built on the church property. And that satisfied the state. The state didn't care if they were ever built or not. Now, the bottom line to it is this, that now that since we have this referendum, it'll go forward, and it's supposed to go forward in November unless everything is passed this evening, in which case it may be withdrawn, may not, council has to do that. But the bottom line is that with respect to that election, if, let's say the election goes forward, and the residents decide that the property shouldn't be developed with apartments, and the referendum goes through, and the city's action is nullified. If that's the case, our requirement is not to be sued by the state, our requirement, and we won't find ourselves in that position. We'll have to look someplace within the city to find a place to build the units that would comply with the housing element. And that's the consequence of that particular vote. So, whether we settle this lawsuit, and which I would love to see happen, I think it'd be great to settle the lawsuit, and move forward, the bottom line is that, that really, the church issue, I'm not afraid of it. I think if you all decide that that was the wrong thing for the council to do, then that'll be your decision. And we'll just have to look within the city to find another place, and the NIMBY arguments are going to have to fall to the wayside, because somebody's going to have to take on that responsibility. And that's part of what I could say, really, the next council will have to deal with, because I'm termed out in November, so good luck to the rest of you. But seriously, and I, and I say that in jest, because frankly, having lived with this project, I would love to see this resolved. Frankly, if we had fifteen multifamily units on this property, and the developer was willing to put up maybe four single-family homes on that property along with that, I'd move to modify and amend what we previously zoned this property for, to permit something that's much smaller in scale, that can, that's more sensible, and much more in conformity with our community. That may not, however, return the dollars, which apparently, we don't know how much the dollars will ever, you know, turn out from this particular property. You know, again, you know, if you think about what this is all about, it's shoehorning, it's basically taking fifteen multifamily homes and using a shoehorn to use that as leverage to put in another twenty-one single-family homes. That's really what this is all about. Without the fifteen multifamily units, you would not be able to do this in our city. And that's really, in part, what, what our council is being asked to do. You know, I, I think the last thing, and I had a bunch of comments, but I, other ones that I could make, but I think that, that ultimately, again, when, when I look at the design of the homes, and again, I, it's not, no criticism of the work that the architects did, but those aren't homes that we build in Monte Sireno. We just don't build these narrow two- or three-story homes and put them on a, on a lot that's just so tiny. I think there's solutions that can be worked out on this particular property, but the type of density that's being asked for is really problematic. And frankly, you know, there's no guarantee this is even going to ever be built, based upon what we've heard this evening. So, you know, it seems to me that, you know, that we're just going to be locking ourselves into a corner by having settled a lawsuit, having changed all of our requirements for zoning on this particular property, and nothing being done, other than the fact that the bar and the restaurant, and the real estate office, and the hotels, hotel or motel rooms continue. So, I'm, if you haven't gathered already, I'm opposed to this. I have been from the very beginning, and I do appreciate the compromises that have been made up to this point in time, but I still think, you know, my, my charter in voting, you know, in running for office, and being a member of the city council was to do the right thing, in my opinion. And I think the right, in my opinion, the right thing to do is to, to not approve this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Wolshimer?
Thank you. I think if you look deep down in everybody's heart, it's kind of human nature to resist change. We would all like to move into Monte Sireno and slam the door shut behind us, so nobody else can move, can move in, and everything stays the same forever, and we all live happily after, after. But that's not reality, that's not real life, certainly not in the Bay Area, certainly not in Silicon Valley. Things change, things change all the time. There are areas in the US where things don't change. Those are areas that are in, that are in severe recession. Nothing gets built there, people are depressed, there are no jobs. We live in a different reality here, so we have to adjust the city and how we run the city to the reality of the Bay Area. This issue has been very divisive to the city, and it would be great to put it behind us. But to be honest, any, any solution would be a divisive issue. It doesn't matter, there's an open property on Vineland, there is an open property on Rose Avenue, just down the street here. If we, if we built there, for some reason, if we managed to build there, there'll be opposition against that. It doesn't matter where we built in the city, there will be opposition. I think this is a perfect solution, almost perfect. It's not quite perfect, but close to perfect for the problem that we have. Only doing nothing might be, might be not divisive, but that's not an option, unfortunately, because doing nothing will have severe consequences. And people can say that's fear-mongering, but there are examples of cities that have run into severe issues and severe trouble, because they resisted the state. For me, this issue is not black and white. I can see advantages, and I can see the disadvantages also. But in general, I'm, I'm in favor of doing this. This project has some very strong points. Would I like to have seen fewer units, probably, but it, to me, this is very, it's acceptable. The impact on the city will be small, minimal, but acceptable. I think traffic is, is really not an issue. I have some questions also about the traffic report, but I think in general, I agree with it. The visibility from Highway Nine is a concern, I recognize that, but I think more, even more than what's proposed here can be done. For example, by changing the twenty-four-inch box trees to thirty-six, thirty-six-inch box trees. So, you start out, what's in the simulation called year five, you start, start out close to that already in year one, by just planting bigger trees. Same with the issues on the southeast corner. The resident who was here from the southeast corner, and I strongly recommend that he works with Mr. Stanley and the owner of the property to come up with a solution there and put in some extra screening. Yeah, I think that's basically what I, what I wanted to say. In general, I'm, I'm in favor. I do think the La Hacienda church issue are connected. The outcome of both will impact the outcome of the other, so they are by definition connected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Turner?
Well, obviously, this is a very difficult position for all of us, a very difficult issue. Few of us really want to see multifamily housing in Monte Sireno, including me. We all want to preserve the unique character of our city. Unfortunately, that decision has been taken out of our hands. Sacramento has decreed that Monte Sireno must provide fifteen units of multifamily housing. There is also a requirement for low-income housing, and fortunately for the city council, they have been able to meet those requirements with ADUs or granny units that people have built. Okay? I think the previous council and city staff have worked very hard to create an exemption for our small city. But those efforts have not been successful, and just ignoring the state isn't an option for us. We have seen what happened to other cities that failed to comply with the state's requirement. Some have just, have suggested on next door, "Oh, just stick it to the state." The city of Pleasanton thought that they could stick it to the state, right? They resisted, spent millions of dollars, and lost the ability to issue their own building permits. We don't want large fines and draconian controls imposed on Monte Sireno. So, the issue is not, will we provide for multifamily housing, but rather, where will we do it? And that's why we're all here tonight. The previous council thought that the best way to solve this problem was to rezone the Baptist church for multifamily housing. They picked the church site, and they zoned it for fifteen housing units. Perhaps that thinking was that the church would never build on that property, and the city would, could sort of fly under the radar. It meant this, the letter, but not the spirit of the state's requirement. Well, that hasn't worked out as we had hoped. We are very much in the state's radar. The state appears to be taking a firmer stand against cities that zone without the intention of building. There is a bill moving through the California Senate that would penalize those cities by forcing them to build even more units. So, even if the citizens would vote to rezone the church, this is not likely to achieve the intended objective. Just some, as somewhat residents around La Hacienda have opposed the development, hundreds of residents in the area around the church rose up opposing that zoning. A lawsuit was filed to force a referendum to rescind the zoning. The city lost, and we spent a lot of money in the process. And now, the city will spend yet another forty thousand dollars to put the zoning issue on the ballot in November. The church leaders opposed the zoning. They were not involved in the process. This was done against their will, and there was a concern that somewhere down the road, eminent domain might be used to force these units to be built. And I believe that if you're going to build a housing project, you'd be hard-pressed to find a worse place to put it than the middle of the church property, across the street from an elementary school. I'm an ele, I am a court teacher, and I would not put my kids in that situation. So, in November, we will all vote on whether to put multifamily housing on the church property. If the people vote no, as I expect, then the city will be out of compliance with state requirements, and will be forced to find another place to put those units. So, this brings us to Hacienda. The pressure for housing in the Bay Area is just too great. I believe our residents are better served by supporting the Hacienda development. We have considerable control over the nature and the character of this development today. This would be prudent, rather than waiting to see what happens a few years down the road, when we might truly have something distasteful forced upon us. I think we need to consider the consequences of whatever decision we make. If we approve this development, we'll have sixteen additional housing units on that property. We already have twenty-unit resident motel in that property. We will eliminate the use of a commercial property in favor of a residential property. We will settle Mr. Stanley's lawsuit without further expense. We will have satisfied the state's requirements and eliminated the threat of a lawsuit from the state. Further, we will have the opportunity to rescind the zoning on the church, eliminate the use of multifamily housing on that property, save the city the cost of conducting the referendum, and put to rest the issue that has been highly contentious for our residents. To me, that sounds like a win. On the other hand, if we don't approve the development, and people vote no on the church rezoning in November, then Monte Sireno will be required to find an alternative. Where will that be? And if we don't find another location in short order, we will most likely be sued by the state. Okay? If we approve the development now, we can ensure that there are, there will never be more than thirty-six units built on that property. If we don't approve this development, Mr. Stanley's lawsuit would become active again. The city staff has done an outstanding job working this plan with La Hacienda. The council has a fiduciary responsibility to protect the city from risks that are very foreseeable. The risk of a crippling lawsuit from the state, the risk of a much higher development being built at La Hacienda, the risk of fifteen units being built on the church property. We can eliminate these risks by approving this development. I want to commend the staff for all the work that they've done to ensure that this proposal does its best to conform to city requirements and protects the unique character of our city going forward. I will be voting to support this development. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilmember Turner. I just want to look to staff real fast and see if we have missed anything that we should have addressed after public hearings?
Yes. So, there were a few issues that were raised that I just wanted to respond to. There was a question about the number of trees that are proposed, and there are sixty-six trees proposed for removal and a hundred and thirty-six replacement trees. Another issue that was raised was regarding the property to the east, and the issue of landscaping was being offered for the other side of the property, but not for their prop, their side of the property. It's my understanding that the applicant is willing to work with that property owner, as well as the property owners to the west, to install landscaping on their properties at his expense. So, if that is agreeable to the council, we would recommend including that in the conditions of approval. Another issue that was raised by Mr. Stewart regarding his letter, his letter was included. We did have a supplemental staff report that addressed all comments that were received in response to the mitigated negative declaration. Although, a response to those comments is not required under SEQA, that was provided. Another issue is the annexation, a question about whether or not we could put a time limit. As this application is proposed, and the processing and settlement agreement outlines, if this project is approved, it will be immediately annexed into the city. And so, the city will, at that point, have provided multifamily housing opportunities within the city. If it is not annexed, then we would not be compliant with our housing element. But that is, that is a requirement, that the annexation occur immediately. So, that will be not at the discretion of the applicant, but as part of this project and the settlement agreement. There was a reference to the Foothill Communities Coalition versus the Orange County. The situation is very different from that case. The decision to make this change to the, to the general plan would be consistent. It is not arbitrary and capricious, and it's within your discretion to do so. Similarly, there have been no violations of the California Brown Act. Similarly, there have been no violations of the California Brown Act. Another issue was raised about the number of exits. There are, in fact, two exits proposed on this site. One is has an ingress and egress, and then there's a secondary access point for emergency vehicles. That is consistent with the requirements of the fire district as well as consistent with our hillside and scenic corridor subdivision requirements. Another issue regarding the alluvium clay on site, there is a mitigation measure in the mitigated negative declaration that requires the compliance with all recommendations of the geologist's report, and that will be required prior to issuance of any building permits. A question regarding the trees, and there was a reference to a penalty for $12,000 per tree. I believe that, if anything, may be a county requirement. That is not the city's requirement. We do have a process to allow tree removals. You have tonight included in the application is a request for a tree removal permit. We typically allow tree removals with a replacement requirement. There is a replacement provided in this application. I did hear an interest in possibly increasing the size of some of those replacement trees, and that would be appropriate to raise in the tree removal permit resolution as a condition of approval, if the council is so interested. And finally, landscaping, we talked about that. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. And in regards to the-- a little bit of the history of the previous pre-zoning that we did, that pre-zoning was done for which housing period? That was the previous housing period, correct?
Correct. That was done for our prior housing element, I believe 2008 through 2015. We're currently in a new housing element cycle, which is 2015 through 2023.
Okay. And then the fact that nothing was ever built based on the previous pre-zoning that we did on that, what did that do to affect our current housing requirement?
Well, it did not change the current requirements. However, it did increase the scrutiny of HCD in that they were no longer willing to allow us to rely on properties outside the city limits to meet our requirements because in the prior housing element, we indicated the property would be annexed. And because of the density range that was approved for the property, the property applicant-- the property owner was unwilling to annex. And so in the current housing element cycle, HCD did require that multifamily housing be provided within the city limits.
And then we're able to do this procedure or bring this procedure to the council tonight because if we do approve this, the annexation occurs, then HCD will accept our housing plan for the 15 multifamily units on that property, which is now officially part of Monteserino.
That's correct. In Housing Element Program 2.5, that is the housing element program that we specifically outlined the rezoning process for the Baptist church site. We did anticipate that if the housing, the general plan amendment and the rezoning did not go through by December of 2016, we would look at alternative sites. The Hacienda site would be an alternative site, but only if it was annexed. So part of the settlement and processing agreement and the application is that the annexation would need to occur.
Okay, thank you. In regards to Councilmember Wolsheimer's talk about bringing in larger trees initially, is that something that we can ask or require the applicant to do during the approval of any permits?
So if you want to ask for that, tonight would be the night to do that, and we would include that in the conditions of approval.
Okay. And in terms of the speakers who were concerned about the screening of trees on their site, is there any kind of guarantee that we can give them tonight through the approval of any applications?
Again, I would recommend that we would include an additional condition of approval in your tree removal resolution. And when we get to that point, we can talk about it, but it would be to provide landscape screening on the adjacent westerly and easterly properties as agreed upon by the property owner. I don't believe there's a final plan for the western property line at this point, and so we would need to provide some flexibility. And it appears as though there's been no discussions between the easterly, so we would want to make it contingent on the property owner's consent.
Okay, thank you. There was a comment tonight that the project was not brought before the Site and Architecture Commission. Why did not-- why did this not occur for this project?
So we-- this is something that the city does in instances where you have several applications going forward at the same time, and those applications-- there are some applications that are not heard by our Site and Architecture Commission but rather go straight to city council. In this instance, that would be the general plan amendment, the rezone, and the annexation. And so in our other projects within the city, it could be a variance, for example, or a subdivision. In those cases, we go straight to the city council because the city council is the only body with the authority to make the necessary changes to approve a project.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions that were not addressed to the council members? Councilmember Brand standing.
Yeah, I have a question, but first, I also want to state that, you know, kind of echoing the comments of a lot of other people this evening about how delighted I really am with the whole process and how everyone's conducted themselves. And this is relates also to my fellow council members who we obviously have some disagreements with about this, and likewise within the community, that I think everyone's conducted themselves very professionally and appropriately, and I think it's a real compliment to the city. So regardless of the outcome, I think that's a really good sign. One thing that I-- the question that I have, though, is a couple of them. Number one is, you said that, I think you said, that we are currently not in compliance with our housing element, and I understood that by passing the 15 units per-- 15 units on the church property that we were in compliance. And by-- what, did I misunderstand you?
No, so we are in compliance. However, when the referendum qualified for the ballot, that put the general plan amendment on hold. And so pending the outcome of that, we may or may not be in compliance. However, the housing element is very clear that if we don't do the church site, we will look for alternative sites. So I would say regardless of the outcome in November on the referendum, as long as we're looking for alternative sites, we will be in compliance.
Right. So there's not an issue currently that we're not in compliance. I mean, I think that's important because I think you gave the impression that we were not in compliance, and I just want to clarify that we are subject to the--
Correct. That's correct.
And doesn't this also, if this project is approved in its current form, doesn't this open up the city to a potential spot zoning issue if other residents get together and combine four acres of property to try to come up with a development similar to this, arguing that they have some uniqueness to their property?
So as proposed, this would only allow a density greater than three units per acre in our multifamily zone with a PD permit. It is within the city council's police power to make the decision that they think is in the best interest of the city. And so long as there are-- in this case, there are unique characteristics about this property that would justify it, but that's up to the council on a case-by-case basis to make a determination of what are the unique circumstances and whether or not a PD permit is appropriate.
Okay. So it is possible, I mean, not-- when I say possible, lots of things are possible, but other developers or residents who decide that there may be a greater financial opportunity to gain more money from their property combine together and decide to do more of what may be permitted on La Hacienda, that certainly is within the realm of possibility.
Right. This action tonight will create a general plan designation that's more dense than what we've had in the past, and so that will create an opportunity that you didn't have previously.
Right. And in the words of, I think, one of the opening comments about this, this is creating a legacy for the community, and this could create a legacy of more type zoning like this in the future.
There could be more requests, yes.
Additionally, in the event we approve this and the developer chooses not to build and instead sells this to a third party, and that third party is-- would be obligated by the zoning that we would be passing this evening, would that be correct?
That's correct.
And they could also come back to us and say, you know, that 36 is not enough, we need more. And that would be up to the next council to decide whether or not it's more. So we're not really just fixing this necessarily for this property tonight and guaranteeing that there'll never be more than 36 units per acre.
That's correct. They could always come and ask for an amendment. However, it would need to be within the range that you're approving tonight, which would be up to nine units per acre. As proposed, this project is 8.08 units per acre, so there could potentially be a slight increase. But again, that would require city council approval.
But the city council could approve 15 units per acre.
You could. Well, ultimately, yes, that's true. It is within the discretion of the city council.
So we are not really locking the door?
No.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers.
You know, you know, you know what the biggest problem with this thing is? And I'm kind of adding on to what you're saying. We're just kicking the can forward. We're going to have another housing element in a few years, and it's going to require us to do this all over again, and it just seems like it's never-ending. And that just is always a problem because I've been living this. And also, the other thing is, I did vote against the last, I was the one to send a vote, and we voted one to three acres, three units per acre, because I felt like that was too little. I wanted to get something reasonable done, and I don't really feel like this is that reasonable. I was thinking more what you're saying than the neighborhood of 20, 25 units for that size property. And that's subjective because I don't know, but it just feels very crowded to me. But this thing's never going to end until we get some state laws passed that say the community of Monteserino is unique. We don't have a lot of land. We're not pleasant, and we can't keep building. We can't keep making up locations to build this stuff, and it's just a constant problem, and it really bothers me. So just wanted to get my two cents in on that.
Councilmember Wolsheimer?
No further comments or questions.
Thank you. Member Turner?
Okay, so I would just like to say a few words before we call this to the vote. And again, I would like to add my thanks to the staff. Jeannie, thank you very much for all of your hard work, and thank you very much to Terry for, on his first big project in Monteserino, welcome to the position of city manager. And I really, I really can't stress enough what a great job that you guys have done. I really am impressed with how we were able to pull together a webpage that was very informative, had all of the documentation. We got it out earlier than we've ever gotten out any type of, any type of project information before so that the community had a long lead time to look at this. I think we got it out two months in advance. We started it and kept it up to date very frequently, and I look forward to this being the standard for any future projects that come. So again, my thanks to everybody for a really great job. My thanks to all of the citizens who have spent a lot of time studying all those documents. Trust me, they're, if you didn't go up on that webpage and look, there were hundreds of pages of documents that I know a number of you went through, and I thank you very much for all of the very, very deep thought that was put into them and all of the study that was done on those documents. And also, I have to thank my fellow council members. I know that we have spent many, many hours, many years for some of us, many closed sessions, many hours on Nextdoor, many coffees with residents, many lunches with residents and visiting residents, and having community meetings, and coffee with the mayor, and pizza with the mayor. Thank you for everybody who came to the Pizza with the Mayor. That was the first one we ever did, and I thought it went very, very well. So with all of the thanks out now, I would just like to say that I am also in support of this project. This has been a long time coming, and this is a project that I think some people think that we just whisked this through. It hasn't been whisked through. This project has been with us since before I was on the council. This project, I've been on the council since around 2010. When I was at the Pizza with the Mayor, one of the attendees was a former mayor, Jack Lucas, a longtime mayor, and he told us some stories about how the city had an opportunity to do some really unique and some really neat things that would have put a lot of open space, public parkland, a community center. We would have moved City Hall there. We would have had maybe even a small coffee shop. And there was vehement, vehement opposition to that. I don't know how many people here attended that meeting. I remember before I was on the council, when Russ Stanley first brought his property to the council and said, "I have some ideas. I would like to see if you would be interested in them." And again, it was much less than what we were talking about today. vehement, vehement opposition to this. When we talked about even putting three units on the property, vehement opposition. Every time we have opposed any type of development on La Hacienda, it continues to grow, and it's going to continue to grow if we don't do something very soon. As I attend meetings around the Bay Area, I'm on a number of different committee and commissions, one of them being the Cities Association. At our general meeting that we had last month, there was a representative from the League of Cities. The League of Cities acts as a lobbying organization for the different cities in California. And I submitted a question that surprisingly, when it was read, was put right to the top of the pile. And the question was, do the legislature, does the legislature, the state legislature, our friends in Sacramento, are they looking at the legislature as the solution to creating the policies to build more housing in California, taking local control away from the cities? And he did not hesitate at all when he said absolutely, positively, yes. Over 100 bills were introduced just in the last year that looked to take local control away from cities, and a lot of them did not pass. You probably didn't even hear a lot about them because they died in committees, but the seeds are being sown, and the bills that aren't being passed today are being retooled. They're gaining more support. As the housing crisis continues to escalate in the Bay Area, they're going to continue to gain more momentum. I see projects like this all around the Bay Area that are typically getting 15 to 20 units per acre. We're around eight, eight, between eight and nine. So this project could easily become a higher-density project. We've heard a number of numbers thrown out where 108 units, 80 units, 60 units. I don't really put a lot of stock in those because that, those were negotiating numbers. I do know when I first wanted to get on the council, and I took a look at some of the different plans that the Hacienda property could turn into, 40 units was the one that seemed to be the most probable one that was going to get built. As we've heard from a number of council members, sure, we would have liked to have less. I would have liked to have had 20 to 25. I would have liked to have had 15. 15 would have been great, but that just wasn't the case. It's the owner of the property wanted to have 40 units. We were able to get between 30 and 35, and it ended up at 36. So this wasn't just, here's a number, ram it down our throats, and this is what we're going to approve, take it or leave it. This was multiple, multiple years of negotiation and working with this particular project. When I, when I take a look at the biggest thing that this property has been to Monteserino, it's really been a point of leverage that's usually been used against us. And I would like to take it off of the table, and I would like to get a reasonable development there, and I would like to, as Councilmember Rogers pointed out, any council in the future can do whatever they want. We're just freezing it at a particular point in time. But I think at this point in time, if we get something that is acceptable, it's livable. As somebody mentioned earlier, we had the Villa Felice over on Winchester. I happen to live a couple of hundred yards away from that. I'll never forget when I moved in, and I saw them tearing the hotel down. I said, "What are they doing?" And, "Well, they didn't tell you when they sold you the house?" I said, "Tell me what?" "Well, they're tearing it down and building 40 homes there." I said, "You're kidding me." He goes, "Yeah, you picked a bad time to buy here, dude." And I'm like, "Oh, you know, what did I do?" Well, I didn't do anything. I didn't sell my house. I didn't leave the city in a panic. I watched it get built. Yeah, I put up with a few days of construction delays, but now every day I pull out to Winchester, I look left, very little traffic. I look right, very little traffic. I drive by that villa, the old Villa Felice, every single day, and it has seamlessly fit into the community. And I know that this project can eventually seamlessly fit into the community, too. I've seen it in a lot of-- I've seen it in a lot of different locations around the country. I know with proper screening and with proper construction techniques, we can mitigate the visual impact on Highway Nine. I've looked at a twenty-five unit development, and then I've gone and looked at a, at a, at a forty unit development. Past the first layer of homes, you can't tell what's behind it. Past the trees, you can't tell what's behind it. So it will eventually fit in, and it will become a part of our community. I've heard people say that this is not part of Monteserino. Well, yeah, it really is. Right across the street is Austin Way, you're sixty feet away from the city line. So it is part of our community, and, and I think we should welcome them into it. And I, and again, thank you all for the very civil discussion that we had tonight. And at this time, I would like to enter, so let me explain real quickly. We have six items that need to be voted on, and we're gonna call up each one of those items individually, so please bear with us, because this is not going to be a, a very quick process. It's gonna take us a few minutes to get through this. So using my nifty cheat notes here, the first item that we are looking to vote on is to consider the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program and adopt the resolution finding that both are in compliance with SEQA and its implementing guidelines. Do I have a, yes?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify. We did provide you with slightly modified resolutions at the dais that just clarified some of the conditions, so I just wanted to make sure that those were the resolutions that we were looking at. And then also wanted to point out that we did make a minor modification to the general development standards to include the cell tower that currently exists on the site. So that'll be included as a conditional use, which means it can stay how it is under these permits. If they wanted to change it, they would need to apply for a use permit. And then if there were any changes to the conditions of approval, those will apply at various stages of the resolution.
Correct. You'll, you'll let us know, so I don't blow through that.
Right.
If somebody misses out on getting extra screening on their properties and stuff like that. Okay, so we have a item we need to vote on, and I will be looking for a motion. Look, you got my?
What are we voting on?
So we are voting on to consider the mitigated neg-dec and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and adopt the resolutions finding that both are in compliance with SEQA and its implementing guidelines. So. No, no, I, I need somebody to make a motion on that, please.
Already done?
Already done. It didn't show up on my screen, so.
I, I hit it, that's why I was asking if you wanted me. Okay, I want to make a motion to adopt the res, the mitigated negative declaration in accordance with SEQA to include the cell tower. Is that right?
Close.
Close.
So we do have two resolutions. There's the resolution of the City Council of the City of Monteserino adopting the mitigated negative declaration for the general plan amendment, pre-zone annexation, plan development permit, grading permit, tree removal permit, vesting tentative map for the project referred to as the Montalvo Oaks subdivision located at one eight eight four zero Saratoga-Los Gatos Road, and a resolution of the City Council of the City of Monteserino adopting the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the Montalvo Oaks subdivision located at one eight eight four zero Saratoga-Los Gatos Road. We'll deal with the other conditions later on.
Okay, so this is the main?
So this is, no, this is just the environmental document. So what you're saying?
Environmental document.
Right, right. What you're saying is that?
Just, just what you see up on the board.
Right, that this document complies with SEQA is one piece of it, and the other piece of it is requiring those mitigation measures so that they are binding on the applicant.
Okay.
Why wouldn't we do the main one first?
Because you can't do anything without doing SEQA first. So we're doing SEQA first. Then we'll do the main one, which I think you're talking about, the general plan amendment.
The general plan amendment.
But we have to do SEQA first.
But isn't that what I just said?
Yes.
SEQA first?
Yes, it is, it is.
So somebody seconded?
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second.
Where is it?
And we're waiting for our.
That's the new thing that's passed out tonight. Again, we didn't have it before.
Give her a minute to see if she can get some cooperation from Granicus here. You know what we say in IT, turn it off and turn it on again.
Reboot.
Upgrade, upgrade. More memory.
Got a lot of technology.
That's the problem.
Yeah, I don't understand if this is gonna come up on our screen.
We're gonna have to take each one of these.
Allow density of the nine units per acre? I don't think so.
Oh, here we go. Five ten oh eight eighteen, there we go. Approve the mitigated neg-dec and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Four votes in. Okay, I've all votes in.
Okay, record the vote, please. Okay, so this item has passed. And now the second item will be the general plan amendment. And the, I'm looking for a motion to consider the proposed general plan amendment and adopt the resolution containing the proposed language, increasing the allowed density within the multifamily residential land use designation. This is what gets us up to the proper number of units per acre.
It would allow you to go up to nine units per acre with a plan development.
With a plan development only.
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to?
Yes, I would like to adopt the resolution, to make a motion to adopt the resolution to amend the general plan to allow nine units per acre to, what was the last one? To include the general, on the existing multifamily land use designation. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
A second, Doc.
Second. Okay, so we're going to get our, voting screens up over here.
Kirsten, do we need to unplug the speaker out there?
There's still people out there. It's not music, it's just bad.
Hey, guys. Yeah. Okay, sorry, at six o'clock, we gotta shut it down, the forty-four hours always.
Now, that's funny.
You gotta love that one. But come on in, there's plenty of seats.
They're putting it on the screen.
You ready?
Yeah. Does somebody second?
Yes, Councilmember Willsheimer was the second. And?
Do you guys have a thing on your screen?
No. I'm just.
No, nothing.
Like a bug.
Nothing yet.
I thought it was a bat or something.
I think it was a bat.
Was it a bat?
No.
Oh, God.
The big one.
There we go. Please touch your voting screens.
I've all votes in.
Record the vote, please.
This is three zero.
No, three two.
Three two, sorry, three two.
Okay. And the third item we will be voting on is to consider the proposed plan development zoning and adopt the resolution pre-zoning the subject property multifamily plan development, RMPD. If you would like to, just say so moved.
Just to clarify, so this would include the modified general development standards that includes the existing cell tower? So it would be modified to include those standards. But the motion would be, it's actually an ordinance, so it's, to introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Monteserino pre-zoning property located at one eight eight four zero Saratoga-Los Gatos Road to multifamily residential plan development, RMPD.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Amen.
Okay, and can we have a, a vote, please? There we go. Please record the vote. And this passes three to two. Okay, and now, item number four. Consider the annexation and adopt the resolution initiating the annexation of the subject property and forwarding their action on to LAFCO. So this is where we would take the application and bring it into the city.
Right. Would be a motion to approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Monteserino annexing property located at one eight eight four zero Saratoga-Los Gatos Road into the Monteserino city limits.
You can just say so moved, if anybody would like to.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, can we vote on this, please? Please record the vote. Okay, thank you very much, that item passes. Item number five, consider the proposed development permit and adopt the resolution approving as conditioned the plan development permit, grade use permit, and tree removal permit. And is this where we need to add in the additions to some of the tree screening requirements we would like to have?
Correct. So in your conditions of approval, condition number seventeen and eighteen are the conditions regarding landscaping. And so if you wanted to include language regarding the properties on the eastern and west boundary, that would be the place to do it, as well as to increase the size of any trees.
Councilmember Willsheimer, that was your item. Would you like to?
Yes.
All right. So we, we have a motion. Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve.
No, no, no. Would you like to second it?
Oh, second, yeah, second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you were, you were doing all the motions, we're gonna.
Okay, second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, call.
I just wanted to clarify the language of the condition and just make sure that it's acceptable. For the screening on the neighboring properties, I would suggest that we add language. In addition, the applicant shall provide additional landscape screening on those properties along the eastern and western boundaries as reasonably agreed to by each adjacent property owner on the eastern and western boundaries of the subject property.
Okay, say, say again the agreed to part?
As reasonably agreed to.
That's not an agreement. I mean, I.
The problem is, at this point, they don't have a final plan, is my understanding. It could be, we.
Why not make it, make it subject to the acceptance of the, of the, the person who lives on the other side of the property?
And perhaps we want to ask the applicant about that. I think the difficulty with that is you could have a property owner that would agree to nothing, and so that could hold up the proper, the, the project. So it would need to be reasonable. The goal is to provide additional screening on those properties, and there needs to be some reasonableness in the demands as well as the offer. And so perhaps it could be as reasonably agreed to by the planning director, or it could be something that the, the planning department could agree to. But I think there has to be some provision for reasonableness, so that we don't have a situation where one or the other is holding them hostage.
What about occupancy permit for the entire property? In the event, let me finish. In the event that, that there is a dispute over the replacement trees, and, and we do this with homeowners all the time, that unless they ultimately satisfied city staff with respect to the changes that they're supposed to be making concerning landscaping, et cetera, they don't get a occupancy permit.
So that is already in the condition, that the landscaping must be installed prior to approval of the final inspection for the project? So they wouldn't get final sign-off on the property until the landscaping had been installed, which means they have to agree to it.
Install it, but does it say unacceptable to the city?
Well, so the prior one says that they will provide it, that what, my proposal to add the language is that they would agree to provide landscape on the, those adjacent properties as reasonably agreed to by those adjacent property owners. That's condition number seventeen. Condition eighteen requires that the landscaping that's proposed be installed prior to approval of the final inspection of the project.
Okay.
And they're not in the city.
Yeah.
So do you want to include the planning department's approval? There needs to be some element so that there is a.
Well, it says submitted to the city planner prior to approval, so I assume that if it was submitted to the city planner and it was not acceptable and approved.
So.
Subject to final.
Yeah, I clearly would be looking at this from a, the reasonableness relative to screening and the adjacent properties. So if, you know, one property owner was looking to get landscaping in an area that wasn't related to screening and trying to hold things up, I would probably suggest that that wasn't reasonable. So, you know, acceptable in my mind would be that we're looking for that landscaping on adjacent properties in both the east and west that's reasonable related to screening, and so we would.
And at that time, these, these folks that currently are not in the city would be in the city, because the property would have been annexed.
No.
No, no.
We have no jurisdiction.
We're not annexing those properties. So it, from what we've heard is that there is a willingness.
That's right, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Willingness on the developers.
That's what I'm wondering.
To provide this landscaping off-site to the adjacent properties regardless of jurisdiction. And because of that willingness, we're able to include as a condition in the permit that he will plant this, since there isn't a plan just yet, we're predating the condition on that there's a reasonable agreement to that landscaping as it relates to screening.
So we could say this, and, and we should look to the applicant to make sure that they're agreeable to it, as well as the property owners. So this would be in condition seventeen, which deals with the type of landscaping. We would add, in addition, the applicant shall provide additional landscape screening on those properties along the eastern and western boundaries as reasonably agreed to by each adjacent property owner on the eastern and western boundaries of the subject property. In the event the property owners are unable to reach agreement, the planning, planning department staff shall determine the appropriate level of landscaping to adequately screen the project from the adjacent eastern and western properties.
Pardon me?
That sounds good. It's leaving it up to the property owners, but to the extent that there is no. It's leaving it up to the property owners, but to the extent that there is no agreement, it's then put to city staff to.
And the applicant has indicated that language would be agreeable to them, and perhaps we should ask the adjacent property owners. Come forward.
Very much. I apologize for interrupting the flow here. But the issue is the setback.
So we're not talking about a setback, we're only talking about the landscaping.
I see. So we will get, because you did not mention on your notes about setbacks. That's our number one issue, and I've communicated that to, in writing to, to Jeanie. And the setback on the western side is twenty feet. On our side is ten.
Right, so if the city council wants to address that issue, they can. Right now, we're just talking about the landscaping. So if the, so what they're proposing and what the applicant is agreeing to is to provide additional screening on your property, so that you.
That's, I'm okay with that, but, but please note that our, our issue is setback.
Right, we, right, we have, but I, I think at this point, unless any of the other council members wish to bring it up, we're hoping that the additional screening will offset the close setback that is on the east side of the property right now.
If I may make a comment. These single-family homes have fifteen feet backyard. If you are to consume five feet of it by landscaping, that leaves you a ten-foot backyard. It's not practical. That's why they are not showing it on the plans. The setback, you can easily, the, the court area, you can have more attached housing in there. What, the story I hear is that.
Sir, sir, we, we've already closed the public hearing, and we're, we're really not gonna have a.
Well, I appreciate very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ann standing.
You know, I, with all due respect, I mean, it's, it's, we've got one more issue left. I don't know that that's, you know, and I think it's very important. I mean, we're trying to be fair for everyone, and, you know, and, and he's gonna be, and I've seen where that property is and what, and the size, all you have to do is look at the, the story poles. It's substantial and it's significant. And, you know, another couple feet may not block it completely, but it, it does make it equal on both sides, so I don't know if that's a problem or not.
Is it feasible?
I don't know.
Is it, is it, I don't even know, is it feasible?
If you were to ask for everything to shift five feet, that could cause a major redesign in how those number of units are accomplished and private drive and their ability to really do what's being proposed. I know five feet, well, I'm not, I'm not designing here, because I'm not, but you shift five feet, that means everything's gotta shift over five feet. And it sounds like minor, but they don't have, necessarily have that much. So it could cause a major, could cause a major redesign.
Might be minor, or might be major.
Yeah.
Can I, can I bring the applicant up to see if we can address this issue?
If the council wants to, yes.
Yeah, is everybody okay with bringing the applicant up? So, Mr. Stanley, you have a?
Yes, the reason that, the reason the site plan was laid out the way it was is because we were asked to include an emergency vehicle access lane on the east side of the property. What that did was require us to change the sizes of the lots, change the size of the roads, and provide the emergency vehicle access. We had to redesign that entire corner and the, on the east side of the property. So it is not an easy fix, and that's not something that we're prepared to do at this time. We think the screening is more than reasonable. We've offered to do it to the folks to the west. We, I've already offered it to this gentleman, and he doesn't even have his house designed. I've never, he's not, showed me a plan. He has no site for it, he has no permit. He, he's, he is not anywhere along in the process. Now, we've spent an inordinate amount of time on what we think is a fantastic plan, and we've worked very closely with staff, and that includes an emergency vehicle access lane, which was critical to what staff had requested. It meets the fire department's turnaround requirements, it meets their turning radiuses, and we feel that it, we're ready to go on this project. So we will do our best, and I love the idea that if we can't agree with the adjoining neighbors, that staff would be the final determining body of that. We're perfectly fine with that. We're willing to screen as necessary to, to make a compatible development.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so bringing it back to council, do we have any other questions or comments for staff, or does city staff have any guidance for us?
So, in addition to that, the only other issue would be the size of the trees. So if you wanted to increase the size of some of the trees, we would want to include that in this same condition number seventeen.
Avery, you wanted to do that, didn't you?
Well, that was for the front.
Yeah, that was part of the, yeah, it was a condition also eighteen or nineteen, I don't know, the size of the, especially along Highway nine.
It's on the plan, right?
Yeah, all the, the larger size is twenty-four inch, so if his, if Councilmember Wolshimer's intent is to increase the size of the trees specifically along Highway nine, I would use that reference, so that all trees to be planted along there that are of the oak and the redwood be thirty-six inch box. I think the other. Yeah, the, the coastal live oak right now are proposed at fifteen gallon. The redwoods are proposed at twenty-four inch, so those would need to be modified. The other trees along there are strawberry trees, you know, those are kind of the fill-in trees, so I think keeping those at twenty-four inch box would be fine. There are some red maples that are out there, they, they, they're into the site along the entry drive, those are at fifteen gallon. But I think the ones that you're looking at in the photo sims are the redwoods and the oaks. So if you're interested in upping those, I would address those along Highway nine to be thirty-six inch box.
So we could add to the beginning of that sec, condition seventeen. Planting shall be provided as indicated on the approved plans with the modification of the proposed oak and redwood trees proposed along Highway nine to be increased in size to thirty-six inch box.
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you. So, does anybody else have any comments or questions about this item? Okay, so at this time, I will be looking for a motion. Okay? We have a, a motion? And we have a second.
And, and we can vote.
And we can vote now. There it is.
Have all the votes in.
Okay, please record the vote. Okay, and so the motion passes, which brings us to our last item, which is to consider the proposed subdivision and adopt the resolution approving the vesting tentative map. So can we get a quick explanation about what this item is?
So this resolution will approve the, the tentative subdivision, which will create the thirty-six residential lots, plus the other common area lots and the cell tower lot. It would be modified to include the same modified conditions of approval that we just approved in the prior resolution. This is the tentative map. When the project is ready to be developed, they'll come forward a final map, but that final map will need to be substantially consistent with this tentative map. So this will create the lots on the Hacienda site.
Okay, thank you. Would somebody like to make that motion by saying so moved?
So moved.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Turner and a second by Councilmember Wolshimer? Is that how it worked out?
No.
Or the other way around? Okay. Guys were too close.
No, not yet.
Okay.
Okay, although it's in.
Please record the vote. Okay, thank you very much. And that concludes item number five. And at this time.
For six. That's your last one.
That was the last one, wasn't it?
That was your last one.
That concludes item five on the agenda. And so our next item will be unfinished business, but I'd like to take a few minute break, and if anybody wanted to leave and not.
Do we really have a lot of unfinished business?
No, we have unfinished business, new business, and committee commission reports. Yeah, but I just wanted to give. It's a great idea.
I like the coffee shop idea.
Yeah, no, and put City Hall on the lower level and put the apartments upstairs. We've talked about it, we just.
But with all these new state mandates, I wonder how that'll fly. But we could do it.
Well, you know, the problem, when we talked about that site. All the residents on that side and down the street. Finish up? All right, so we're starting again? All right, so we do not have any unfinished business. We do not have any new business. I'd like to start with Councilmember Turner for our committee commission reports.
Oh, I just wanted to report that I finished the south flow, so we made a recommendation, several recommendations on how to mitigate the noise.
Great.
Now, the FAA will have to approve what we've done, so that's it.
There have been no meetings, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember Ann standing?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember Rogers? All right, two quick things, just quick. First, we passed our budget at the library, and things are going very good. They have a new technology program that will be increasing the, the number and the power of the computers that are in the libraries. And at the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Group, our executive director left. So if you know anybody that's skilled with P-25 digital networks, we'd love to hear from them. But the good news is, she took a job as the Director of County Communications, so she will still be very involved in the project.
Is that inoperability?
Interoperability.
Oh, interoperability. I was gonna say, I think we've got somebody right here that could do that.
I'm curious, what's her name?
Heather? I'm sorry, did, did I say who, or?
No, you did, and I was just curious.
Oh, Heather Plamden. Plammonden? Probably embarrassing myself, I hope she's not listening.
Thank you.
Any city council member comments? Yes, Councilmember Wolshimer.
I asked our city manager to, with my help, I offered my help, to put together a process for the selection of committee members. We had a little bit of disorganized selection of the youth commission last time, so I think we should have a, some kind of flow. If we have more candidates than positions, we should have a process.
Thank you for that, that was definitely a little.
I offered my, I offered my help to put something together.
Good idea.
I will work with Councilmember Wolshimer on that. Other cities get lots of applications for different positions, and they have their processes that they use. We'll, we'll gather up a few of those.
We're just not used to that.
I think it's awesome that we have more people than spots, honestly.
Great problem to have.
Those people are interested.
Yeah. Any other comments? Okay, I'll make one quick comment. We had an awesome youth commission meeting today. So today was our first meeting, the kids are very excited, and we're looking forward to just continuing to build on our legacy and have a, a better youth commission every year. City managers report?
The only thing I will report out on is, I don't know if you've noticed, but the pavement management program this year's project is well underway, started on Monday.
At, at eight thirty-five this morning, I hear.
Sound of progress.
Going up my block. I didn't know that Pinecone Court was included in that, in the first round. I thought that was.
Yes, and it's actually gonna happen a lot faster than I had ever possibly imagined. They may be finished by the end of next week.
That's great.
With the entire project.
Wow, because when I drove by Blanchard, I'm like, wait a minute, it's, it's done.
No, not Blanchard?
No, no. It, it's not them, but I'm just saying, just, just a little bit of work that they've already done, it looks so much better.
Oh, yeah. And with, with approving the contract for Blanchard tonight, we'll be moving forward as quickly as possible, coordinating very similar to what we did for the larger project with the Blanchard Drive residents, and I will send a communication to them this week letting them know that they weren't following along tonight.
And which contractor was that, DeAngelo or something, was that it?
Bortolato, it's actually the same group that's doing our larger project.
Great.
They ended up with the lowest bid.
That's great, thank you for moving that, because that, that was a lot of work.
Yes, absolutely, I mean, I couldn't be happier, I think this is a really awesome thing that's happening for the city.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a meeting next week, regular time, regular scheduled place, and thank you all very much for all of your work and for really having a great meeting tonight. I know it was a tough meeting. I haven't, not seen the agenda yet, but.
It should, it should be considerably shorter. Because we had the budget workshop, and the council really didn't indicate any changes major at all, it should be a fairly straightforward event, I would assume.
Okay, excellent. But there will be a second reading for everything we did tonight, so. Just for the ordinance.
I will call in.
Okay, thank you very much. All right.
You guys did do a great job on this.
Yeah, thank you again, everybody.